Good evening, please rise to the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is in its hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Andy.
We'll start off this evening with our roll call, please.
Councilmember Bozick.
Here.
Councilmember Reavis.
Here.
Councilmember Conover.
Present.
Councilmember Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Jessen.
Here.
Councilmember Larson.
Here.
And Councilmember Witten.
I am here.
Seven to zero.
Next, we're looking for approval of council minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading minutes, September 18th, second reading, September 20th and 26th.
We got a first, we got a second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. And we've got our first reading.
Notice to taxpayers of proposed additional appropriations, notice is hereby given to taxpayers of Porter County, Indiana, that the proper legal officers of Porter County will meet in the Porter County Government Administration Building located 155 Indiana Avenue, Valparaiso, Indiana, on October 30th, 2018, at 5:30 PM, to consider the following additional appropriations in excess of the county budgets for the year 2018, and to transact any further business which might come before the council. General fund, sheriff garage, auto truck and equipment, $35,000. Drug-free communities fund, Porter County Substance Abuse Council Fund, $1148. Distribution's $180,000. Sheriff pension fund, Fund $1193, perf, $35,000. Surveyor perpetuation fund, Fund 1202, other equipment, $40,000. Veteran services donation fund, 4112, other services, $500. Taxpayers appearing at such meetings shall have a right to be heard thereon. The additional appropriations as finally made will be referred to the Indiana Department of Local Government Finance, which will make a written determination as to the sufficiency of funds to support the appropriations made within 15 days of receipt of a certified copy of the action taken, signed Vicki Urbannick, auditor of Porter County, published October 19th in the Chesterton Tribune.
Thank you, Vicki.
Well done, Vicki.
Thank you.
So, this evening, we'll start off with the commissioners.
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of $6,000 and the transfer of $359,000.
We've got a first, we've got a second, do we have any questions or comments?
Anything the commissioners want to add to this big request?
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, so next up, we have Circuit Court Judge Harper.
I'll make a motion on the $4,000 transfer for Judge Harper and the $480 transfer for Judge Bradford.
Second.
We've got first and two seconds, any questions or comments regards to these transfers?
How long, Judge Harper, how are you?
I'm doing swimmingly.
Anyone else have any questions?
That was really more of a statement, not a question.
That's true, I did ask. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next on to the extension office for a transfer of $5,200 from salaries to machinery.
I'll make that motion to approve, second.
We've got a first, we've got a second, this is to purchase a new copy machine. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I'd just like to add that she was able to reduce the maintenance agreement that was in question before, so we had a discussion earlier today, so I think it's reduced down to $80 versus the $250 that was originally quoted.
Great, big difference.
Thanks, John. Anyone else have anything on the extension office? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. On to veteran services.
Make a motion to approve the $500 additional.
Okay, we've got a first, we've got a second, this is to contribute to the USS Indiana Commissioning Committee, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, excuse me, there is an additional. Roll call, please, Ms. Vicki.
Yes, Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
And Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have the Porter County Substance Abuse.
I'll make a motion on that $180,000 grant.
Okay, we've got a first, we've got a second, any questions or comments?
It's all Grant.
Hearing none, all those in favor, or, excuse me, roll call.
Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
And Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Next up to our surveyor.
I'll make a motion on the additional $40,000 and the transfer of the $3,000.
Second.
Okay, we got a first, we've got a second, how you doing this evening, sir?
Very good, thank you.
How's that perpetuation fund doing, Vicki?
Real good.
Well, thank you. Real good, how is that perpetuation fund?
The balance is $85,003.
Real good.
Fifty-nine and ninety-five cents.
Awesome, that's my question. Anyone else have any questions or comments?
No, we talked earlier.
Okay, hearing none. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
And Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Thank you. Next on to the recorder, the recorder's perpetuation fund.
I'm gonna make a motion on both his transfer and the Form 144.
Second.
First, we got a second, how you doing this evening, John?
Hey, John, so you're taking your hourly up, you said you changed the job description a little bit, job responsibility?
Yes, the lady has been getting the tasks she's been doing up until we just purchased a book scanner, and she's been doing a lot of book scanning, and that requires a little bit more of a skill set, I believe, so she's deserving, she's doing a fantastic job scanning our books.
Will that affect your, I mean, do you have enough money in your hourly to support the increase, you think?
I think so, if not, I may be back, but...
You're running out of time, man, it's almost...
Well, I'll probably be back next month to boost it up a little bit. I wasn't sure I was gonna be able to get, I was hoping to get this in, and I was fortunate to get it in.
Yeah, it's fine.
Time for this meeting, so yes, I plan on bumping up a little bit to the end of the year.
All right. Anyone else have any questions or comments for the recorder? Hearing none, roll call, please, Ms. Vicki.
Okay, Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
And Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Thank you, have a good evening. Motion carries. Have a good evening. Next to development and stormwater management.
I'll make a motion on both transfers from Key and Bridge.
Okay, we got a first and a second, any questions or comments?
Why, yeah.
He wanted to come up.
Why are you wearing bears colors?
Um...
No, I'm just kidding.
I left it out of my closet. I'm sorry, I didn't wear my hard hat.
Yeah, that's what I was, where was the hard hat?
I know, I'm sorry. I had the hard hat on to advertise our groundbreaking ceremony in South Haven at 1 o'clock on Thursday.
The culvert, why, stormwater makes me think, why didn't that come out of stormwater?
Um, we signed a memorandum of understanding with the highway department and had it go through the commissioners for approval that essentially any structure that's larger than eight foot diameter, it starts to get into a specialty type situation, it is considered a small bridge structure in that case, so we agreed that anything that's greater than eight foot or larger, that we would pay for it out of the bridge fund, and anything eight foot and less would come out of the stormwater fund.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. All right, good evening. On to Parks and Rec.
I'll make a motion on the transfer of $17,500, $500, and $4500.
Second.
Okay, we've got a first and a second, any questions or comments, how you doing, Laura?
Say what?
Okay, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
That's fine.
On to highway department.
I'll make a motion on the two transfers.
Second.
We're covering a possible snow event.
Ah, we're there already, eh? We've got a first, we've got a second, anyone have any questions or comments?
What if it doesn't snow, man?
Well, next, it's gonna be another serious snow, so...
Would the hope, that would hopefully cover us till the end of the year, worst case scenario?
Yeah, that gives us enough of, at least one good snow event. I know, it doesn't sound like much, but, I mean, that's covering, yeah, that's covering a lot of, like, if the snow event lasts like, a week.
Hopefully, we don't have that for July.
Yeah, like, we had one incident last year, we have like, 20,000 of them now, so bump it to 50, so we'd be still, be just fine, so that's why we're doing it.
We wanna be prepared.
Yeah, exactly, we don't want...
Be good things?
Not enough money to pay for snowfall.
Right.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You too, man.
Next, we've got the sheriff.
I'm gonna make a motion on the sheriff's pension trust of the $35,000 to perf.
Second.
We got a first, we got a second, any questions or comments?
Stop it.
Well, we only did one so far. Okay, hearing no questions or comments, our roll call, please, Ms. Vicki.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
I'll make a motion on the $35,000 additional sheriff's garage.
Second.
Okay, we've got a first and a second, and you guys are just using this money to repair maintenance on the vehicles?
And it's, hopefully, we won't need it all, but I'm averaging, but you never know, depends on what happens, any car.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
And Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Next, we're on to the jail fund.
I'll make a motion for the $36,000 from salaries to overtime.
Second.
We got a first and a second, any questions or comments?
So, how are we booking on overtime right now, let's talk about that a little bit.
Same thing, I'm averaging out, I think we'll be fine.
Vicki, can you pull that up, just to, so we can get a dander at the numbers?
We have four open positions, four new jailers starting on the 12th.
Wow, you took it down.
Yeah.
$97.63 sitting there, that's all right.
Well...
No wonder you're here.
Yeah.
So, you've got some new folks starting in...
On the 12th.
On the 12th.
And we just put three new bees out on the floor, so they're still not on their own.
Okay, all right. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Good evening. On to EMA.
I'll make a motion on all the transfers.
Second.
Okay, we've got a first and a second, are there any questions or comments? I think it's pretty self-explanatory, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Yes. Next, we're on to adult probation.
So, I'm gonna make a motion on all the Form 144s, and we can discuss them.
Yeah, 'cause I got questions. Okay, we got a first and a second. Can you kind, good evening, how you doing today?
Good.
Can you kind of explain what's going on here?
So, I've mentioned about this before, we had some senior officers that have retired and were replacing them with newer officers who have to be paid less, which is why you see some changes where things are being zeroed out, it's just that money wasn't needed to pay for the salaries of the new people coming in. And I do have a special request to ask if this could be retro to yesterday's date, because we have four new officers that started on yesterday's date. The line I have is they call for, right now, call for more money to be paid, or asking for less money to be paid, but we're just asking for the change.
That's okay, right, if we retro it to yesterday? I'll amend my motion, I'll amend my motion to include that it's retroactive to yesterday, how's that?
Okay, we've got amended motion, we have amended second.
Second agrees, yeah.
What's the PO vacancy propose, it goes from 22 to nothing, 22,000 to nothing, you just get rid of that position?
No, 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 we're not getting rid of that position, that position was previously paid more money than what we need right now, so to the tune of $22,000 less, so that goes to show you the senior officers that are leaving, that are being replaced, people that are making significantly less, that's how we were able to take that back down to zero.
It's last money, I'm all for it.
Yeah, I like that. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Thank you. Next up, we have our second reading, please.
Whereas it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than what was appropriate in the annual budget, therefore to be the ordained result by the Porter County Council of Porter County, Indiana, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the funds named and for the purposes specified, subject to the laws governing the same. General fund of $35,000, drug-free communities fund, $1148, $180,000. Sheriff pension fund, $1193, $35,000. Surveyor perpetuation fund, 1202, $40,000. And veteran services donation fund, 4112, $500, and that concludes second reading.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, excuse me, roll call, please, Vicki.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
And Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Thank you. Next up to our attorneys' report, Mr. Harper.
As it pertains to any of the agenda items on the regular meeting, there's nothing to, new to report, I know there's a lot to probably discuss, but I think that's gonna be discussed at the next meeting, so...
We will be discussing the 4D stuff, and stuff like that during the budget meeting, which is directly following this meeting. Okay, now we're to the any other matters that may properly come before the council. First up this evening, we have Mrs. Treasurer Michelle Clancy and Auditor Vicki Urbannick's proposal for monthly interest earning, earnings fund reallocation.
This is a follow-up of what we had brought up earlier in the year, I think back in February or March, and it has to do with the allocation of the monthly interest that we're receiving off of what I always call non-special funds, so not the hospital, not, what else do we have?
Bond funds, major money.
All that, right, so, and what we're currently doing is, we're allocating it towards the fund balances of these selected funds, and I apologize, I didn't reissue the list from back then, but, 9% of all the interest earned is then divided up between like, 10 funds, and on a monthly basis, it's very little money, I know some receive pennies every month, and so between the two offices and the work involved to distribute this money, we found it better to just put it all in the general fund, and then if it's requested, then it's a, you know, you guys can decide to move it over, but we're just trying to streamline the offices a little more.
So, we need a motion to approve the fiscal body, approve you guys to receive 100% of the interest received from tax collection monies into the general fund.
This isn't tax collections either, this is just...
Interest.
Yeah.
I just pulled it off of your request.
Does it say tax collections? Oh, okay.
So, I'll amend my motion to indicate that we approve the 100% of the interest received to be allocated into the general fund, correct? Is that what you want?
Correct, not including the special funds.
Not including the ones, the special funds that are self-rented.
Right, right.
Fine, my motion. We got a first, we've got a second. Do we need roll call on this? Let's go roll call, please, yeah.
Okay.
Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
And Councilmember Reavis.
Yes. So, that's all you guys need from us on this, right? We're good?
We're good.
All right, all right, thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you.
First up this evening, we wanted to bring up that come December 31st, we have some positions expiring, so if anyone is interested, you can apply on our website, on the council website, Joy's adding it, she hasn't added them yet, but soon you'll be able to see a listing of all the open positions, and there'll be an apply to link there, so I'm sure you just fill it out and print it and send it in to us. But there are a few openings on the Alcohol, Alcoholic Beverage Commission, the Park Board, the PETA Bowl Board, the RDA, which is a joint appointment between us and the commissioners, and then we have a few EDC appointments, the Chesterton EDC, Portage EDC, and Valparaiso EDC. So, if anyone is interested in applying for any or all these positions, please do so, 'cause we'll be discussing it following the January 1 meeting, whenever our organization meeting is at that time.
Has a deadline on that been established?
No, do you want to establish one now? I mean, that's a good question, I really don't know, do we want to...
We appoint those ones.
I mean, the first meeting in January, right?
Yeah, so why don't we have them in by...
December 31st.
Yeah, well, December 15th, maybe, give us a couple of weeks to get up Christmas morning, review all the applicants, maybe make some phone calls, that kind of thing.
So, December 15th at noon?
Right.
Good deal. All right, and that's all we had as far as the council, did anyone else have any matters that may properly come before the council?
I can hardly wait for third reading.
Okay.
This is gonna be awesome.
Hearing none, I'm looking for a...
Can I?
Yes. Do you have your hand up, 'cause I missed it, I'm sorry.
They did.
I apologize. Good afternoon.
We just had a quick clarification, we talked to Joy this afternoon.
We're gonna bring it up in the budget, I talked about the changes, yeah.
Thank you, coming up. You're enthusiastic.
Okay, we've got a motion for adjourned, do we have a second? Okay, with a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All right, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Guys, we're gonna take a five, 10 minutes, 10 minute break, and then we'll be starting the third reading, everybody.
It's going down that way.
I have, I have like, seven of them earlier.
Yeah.
They're so small compared to the older early days.
Did you... No, why? No, he just, he said he is, he's a...
Yeah.
Oh, he was... This is okay, and I know if you're talking...
I have no, I have not seen it.
You haven't?
Nope.
Those are them.
Those are them, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, look at it, nice stuff, I love seeing it.
I don't know.
I don't have it.
No, no, we just find the...
How you doing?
Yeah. I don't know.
What are you doing?
Medium or hot or medium, mild?
It's not there.
Got my eye on it.
Okay. How are you?
That was good.
This is the night reward.
Hi, how are you?
Very good. I saw another one.
She wants to tell me that she's got another one.
Let me do another one.
We're not gonna hear him.
I don't know, whatever, say it.
If I give it to her, she's gonna...
She has one.
She's gonna get that.
That's your most...
I know there's one too. That's what you're gonna do.
All right.
I was just getting it.
It looks like that, right?
Uh, it's like a sheep. Yeah, always like that.
Did you make it to pick it up there?
No, I passed it down to Jeff. Okay, so a few things that we need to talk about. Yes.
That's what I was talking about.
No.
That's what I was talking about.
No.
That's what I was talking about.
Yes, always like that.
Did you make it to pick it up there?
No, I passed it down to Jeff. Okay, so a few things that we need to talk about. Yes.
That's what I was talking about. That's what I was talking about.
Yes.
That's what I was talking about.
Yes.
That's what I was talking about.
Yes.
That's what I was talking about.
Yes.[1407.12]
I was just getting up. Mine was there, but yeah, we'll find it with you. I will collect your-
It looks like that, right?
Uh, it's like a sheet.
Yeah, always like that.
Did you make it to pick it up there?
No, I passed it down to Jeff. Okay, so a few things that we need to talk about? Yes.
That's what we're gonna talk about.
No.
Well, we might- I don't know. Sorry, buddy. Meaning the two- I don't know, did we give it to you?
Yeah.
Yes.
We did, we did, we talked. First thing that- Alright. I don't think he's anything. Okay. Did he check? Oh, yes. Did he get the candy? Did he get Halloween bag? Yes, I guess. Right. We're going to base the cost of the rate on what the pay is now. If you add the weight, it's definitely- So, there's still Valerie, I'm like- The rate, and that's it. Okay, okay. You're ready. Good job.
Why do I hold them down?
Three of those. Okay. Everything that's going on, I don't know. I love it. May I be asked? I will do my best, okay? Yeah. I have to, no, thank you. I'm getting mad.
You're done with this?
I'm not kidding. Oh, that's very bad. Maybe, if you, if you like to go, I feel three volumes per page. We have to add the host of the party, if you ask for that. And, uh, the documentation, it's very much- I didn't have that.
I think it's off that D and I don't, I don't think it was.
You're right. Oh, that.
Okay, so I think that was D and E, and I'm not even saying that.
This is not the second memo, this is just the first memo.
Right, right. Everything you said, right? I know.
Yes, yes. We're gonna wait, we're gonna give them the full rate based on what the pay is.
Right.
Yeah.
We're gonna, yes, and I think we need to clarify that.
Yeah.
Tonight. Yeah, I just wanna make sure I'm doing the right thing with those two payers. So, you set up for them? To those two deputies. Huh?
Yeah.
I'm a little concerned. Email it, email that that one right. What do you think, guys? There's something you said there?
No, I heard that.
Yes, I don't know.
Why don't I say that?
Yeah, yeah, I don't know.
So, do we have an agenda for the study, or is this a reading?
Well. We gotta go, we gotta go.
Yeah. We do love one, I know that. But you know, I think we're already on the-
I'm not present.
Two months to do, uh, and, uh, okay. We can adjust that we do the final, uh, final adoption for salary order next meeting, since we're making some changes today. It just has to be done before December 31st.
No, on a week. I'll do that.
And we don't have to. Sure. And now-
I wanted to knock it all off.
Hey, have we had to- Now, you can just-
Because verbally-
Almost made me miss the deadline, that's all.
Yes. Yes, yes, I'm gonna leave up. Yes, yes. I think that's smart enough.
Can we have a truth that up for you guys? Would be different about-
Starts up? As well, yeah. Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My allegiance is the United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, welcome back everyone that was here, and welcome all the new people. Uh, we're starting our third reading of the final budget hearing this evening.
Roll call.
Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bowdoin.
Here.
Councilmember Reavis.
Here.
Councilmember Conover.
President.
Councilmember Graham.
Here, Joy.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Barton.
Here.
And Councilmember Whitney.
I'm here.
Seven present.
Thank you, Vicki.
Okay, guys, what are your thoughts? Where do you guys wanna start at? Well, I think there's a couple, I think we have a couple of housekeeping things that we wanna try to take care of before we, uh, get into the actual third reading. Couple of clarifications and a couple of things that we wanted to clean up. So, I've had some opportunity to speak with a number of you, and, uh, speak with Harold, and speak with, uh, that's pretty much it. And, um, we wanted, first of all, the, I think we should clean up what we're gonna do with the 4D lease. And so my thoughts were, uh, in talking with, uh, our council, and reading the legal opinion, and reading through the case law, and then discussing that with, with Attorney Harper, that we want to, uh, not, or I would suggest that we not appropriate, the lease payment for 4D on, uh, for, for next year. However, in speaking with the auditor, and speaking with a couple of you, it seemed that we do wanna preserve the money somewhere, uh, because 4D's going somewhere. So, uh, and that somewhere is undoubtedly gonna require some renovations, and it's gonna require some cost, and-
Moving costs?
Moving costs, and then they're gonna be moved again. So, we know from the legal opinion that was, uh, shared to us eventually, that, uh, the lease from the independent attorney's report, uh, is void. Furthermore, there was some language in there about the extension, and what we might do to void it. And I think that it would be an ill-fated journey for us to, A, appropriate funds now and avoid lease, and furthermore, uh, to appropriate funds on the extension, which starts next year, which we found out this, this year. Uh, so, my suggestion would be this. We, we move that money out of that budget, move it into another line item in another general fund budget, 'cause I don't think we wanna reduce our general fund by that much, and then have to deal with that money later. That's a mistake. So, one easy and, and pretty clear place might be in our county council contractual line item. Would that work? Uh, Vicki?
Yes.
Uh, so we can move that money over there, so at least we've preserved the funds to deal with the 4D office, uh, in the location that the commissioners determine, uh, doable. Any thoughts or questions about that?
No, I would agree with that. It makes sense to me. We, we preserve the money just in case we need it. But the commissioners are gonna have to make a move or figure something out pretty quick.
So furthermore, we don't wanna be in a situation where it gives the appearance that we're not funding the 4D office. Because, but it's glaringly obvious, whatever degrees of, uh, missteps led this, this colossal, uh, mess to our door, the fact of the matter is we can't not, we just can't fail to, to provide for the 4D, uh, office and the services it provides. One other thought, one other suggestion, uh, that I had with our attorney was, I think we need some sort of, and I think Harold, you can speak to this, I don't wanna take your thunder, but I think that we need to have a resolution that, uh, clearly indicates that we are not, in fact, appropriating for the lease. And so, that's, uh, subsequent to my conversations with some of you and with Harold. Harold was kind enough to craft a resolution for us to entertain for, uh, this evening, and I think, Harold, you tried to keep it brief and short and sweet and right to the point. So Harold, why don't you speak to that?
The, the statute provides that if, if the council chooses not to appropriate monies for a contract, for whatever reason, if the council makes a written determination of that, then the contract is considered canceled. And that, that written determination is by, also by statute, uh, considered final and conclusive. So, if the council is to go, uh, to make that decision, I think it's a good idea from the perspective, or given the issues that are there with the contract, I think the council, if the council chooses to go and not appropriate, I think it's best, in terms of the legal interests of the county, to have that written determination. And, you know, separate and apart from whatever the council might determine, I, I, I think if the council does make that decision to not appropriate on that particular lease, i- it can be made separate and apart from preserving those monies in a, in a different account, um, I think the council should make that determination.
Okay. So, I assume you've all had the opportunity to at least see the resolution? And, uh, did, did anybody have questions for Harold on that? So I suppose this might be an appropriate time to act on that? Harold?
Well, I, in light of this new situation, I guess I wanted to say, in my eighteen years on this council, and having assessed all the needs of department budgets through eighteen years, I've never experienced any discussion as heated and as controversial as this year's discussion for the 2019 4D lease. In 1999, twenty years ago, the commissioners leased- the commercial space from the private sector for this necessary department. And, um, now we've been aware of this attorney's opinion, and it affirms the original lease, and its renewals from a private vendor's been considered void because of a little-known or unknown Court of Appeals ruling in 1993, six years before the inception of the lease, that the rules have changed. And these rule changes have affected all units of government in Indiana. It's also my understanding that Porter County, and more than likely all taxing entities in Indiana, may be unaware of these 1999 rule changes concerning leases. So we find ourselves today having a long-term supposedly invalid void lease with a private vendor who spent a considerable amount of money for a specific 4D department improvement. The vendor thought they had a valid long-term lease and a guaranteed income. But now we have a newly acquired county building to house the various government functions, including 4D, that won't be ready for a year or so. What we do as a council, do right now? Do we ignore the vendor's good faith lease and cut the commissioners off at the knees by stripping the appropriation? Do we want unnecessary spent tax dollars twice for a temporary 4D build-out? And then again, the permanent 4D, 4D build-out? Is it this council's objective to spend taxpayer money twice? The Director of 4D, Laura Stafford, sent us all a letter today outlining the special requirements we need to house this office. If you don't have a copy, they are available. And this is much more complex than moving fifteen desks and file cabinets into a temporary space. I think we need to give the commissioners the option of one more tool in the toolbox to reach a viable solution. I don't know the current landlord for 4D, but I do know the previous landlord. And it is my understanding the landlord and his representative would be willing to have dialogue with the commissioners if we can just give them the financial latitude.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Karen. So, it's not really that easy, frankly. I mean, and I appreciate your comments, Karen, I really do, but that, that's not really the whole story, frankly. Uh, let's be clear about this. Uh, yes, there is a legal opinion that says the lease at its inception was void. But there's also some language in there about the extension. Now, let's talk about that extension for a second. We keep talking about all these wonderful, good faith things that were done, which is fine. But I wanna be clear about this. In 2012, when I found out who owned the building, and when I found out about the increase that was built into the lease, it raised some questions in my mind. I was told at that time that we were stuck with the lease till the end of 2018. That was in 2012. A little over a year later, about a year and a half later, in 2014, unbeknownst to this body and this board, and four years before the lease was supposed to be, was, was expiring, it was extended to 2024. Now, let's flash forward. Nobody told us that, and we're operating on the assumption that we're stuck in this lease till 2018. Now, let me be clear about this. Let me be very clear about this. In 2012, I said in that meeting, if I'm still here at the end of 2018, I don't want to hear that we haven't tried to find other places, that we haven't put out bids, that we haven't looked, done a market analysis. I said that in 12. In 2014, the commissioners extended that lease without telling us. And it turns out that lease was signed months by the commissioners after that approval, but before that meeting by our prosecutor. Now, if that doesn't seem odd, then okay. And that was 14. Now, let's flash forward to this year. When we asked as a body, when is that lease up? It's 2018, correct? And again, they were told, yes, at the end of 2018, that lease is up. And we made a decision to purchase that building, and I don't know what everybody else's decision was based on. I can't speak to others. But I can speak to myself. And I specifically said, when will the savings start? And I was specifically told, beginning of 2019. And only later on will we be told, oh, gosh, you'll just never guess what happened. It's not 2019. We're six years wrong. It's 2024. So, to say that this whole mess is some sort of a archaic law that, or case law, that is Chub versus Lake County from 1993, and, gosh, no one knew what was going on, that just isn't really what made this thing controversial. It isn't. The way this was done was just wrong. It's not the way government's supposed to work. It's not the way we expect ourselves to work. And it's clearly not the way we expect other bodies in this county to work. So, yeah, it was very odd, and I felt misled, frankly, to my vote to buy the building. There's other reasons to buy that building, but I gotta tell you, my vote swung, tipped on that. We were told specific amounts of money we were gonna save, commencing in 2019. So, yes, Karen, it was a very controversial subject, but it was a controversy that was born of misinformation.
Well, Dan, you and I can access commissioner's meeting minutes.
Oh, here we go.
Um, you know, we, we can, we can do our due diligence, too. We've had, for the most part, good, good communication with the commissioners. There's been a couple of holes, maybe, that not always the information was flowing.
Five hundred thousand are a hole.
So, anyway, um, it, it happened.
It did.
I was unaware, too. I was unaware, too. But we find ourselves in this situation.
And I, and I, your point's well made. We can go and, we can hawk the commissioners' meetings in minutes. But we did what I considered to be one step more. We asked the question. We made it clear in 2012 what we expected, and then we asked the question. Hey, guys, when's it expire? I mean, that's pretty, you go to the source and you ask them, when does this expire? That, that's pretty due diligent, isn't it? Other than one of us taking time off of our work, going up there and saying, I wanna see every single contract in this county, and I wanna review it over the next two, three weeks. We asked the people, when, when's this expire?
Well, there were, um, a couple commissioners that weren't there.
No.
Then.
It's true.
It was done in a public meeting, and I'm not here to debate that. We have a problem.
We do.
We have a problem, and we're here today to fix the problem. Doesn't matter anymore how we got to the problem. We have to fix the problem.
Those who do-
And we might be facing some serious litigation. I'm not saying, do we need to go out to 2024? Heck, no, I'm not saying that. But do we need to have a way for the commissioners to possibly negotiate, settle? Uh, maybe we can't enter into a new lease, but to find some viable solutions? Or do we just wanna cut them off at the knees and say, we're not gonna fund this anymore?
I don't-
And let them screw us, and let's maybe lose them-
So, your idea, so just, I'm curious, and I'm, I'm open to discussion, and Harold and I have had lots of discussion about this. We now know, from the double-secret, not-so-secret legal opinion, that the lease is void. I don't think we, as a body, can extend a void lease. I don't think we, as a body, can, can fund a void lease. That law, or that case came out specifically, specifically, to address this kind of thing. So, I think we're sort of, you're right, it is what it is, and we are where we are. But the fact of the matter is, to a large degree, our hands are tied. We, even if we wanted to extend this lease, I don't think we can. I think it would require a whole new lease, and I think that that lease would have to go through the procedure required by law. And that requires notice, and that requires signatures, and there's a reason for that. Because we don't want sort of these weird kind of, and this isn't even on the vendor. I don't, he's not elected, at least not to county office. But I mean, it's the people that- that are elected, the Commissioner at the time, and the prosecutor, quite frankly, these people who are elected to do things openly.
Well, we can't, it's only the Commissioners that can.
Exactly, so here we are. So we have this thing, and the question is, what can we do? So I think, my suggestion, you're right, we might very well be eastbound and down, headed to litigation. I hope not, but what can we do? So, I think.
Fifty signatures? Laura, where are you?
Go, go.
I'm Laura Stafford, and I can probably get those out of the night of an hour.
Have a public meeting. Let's vet this thing. Let's vet a market analysis. Let's see what happens. Because I would love to do that. That would be wonderful to see how this shakes up. I would, all the wonderful improvements, I'd love to go over to the City of Alpo and ask for the building permits. I'd love to do all those things. But at this point, we have what we have. And so I think that the safest and smartest answer for us is, at this point, don't unfund 4D. I keep hearing that crap. And I'm, I'm not unfunding 4D. We're putting the money that we know that we will undoubtedly need in some form or fashion to support the 4D office in a fund that can be accessed, whatever direction things end up going. So maybe the Commissioners do decide that they're just dying to stay there, and they go get, someone does go get fifty-one signatures. We do have the statutorily required public meetings. It is brought to us like it's supposed to be, instead of the backdoor stuff, and we have a public hearing, we decide we want to stay there. So, at least we have the money there.
Well, that's what I want to do, is preserve the money there. It gives the Commissioners this option.
So that's my suggestion.
And that's what they're looking at, that we're discussing moving it to the council.
To the council, contractual. The end.
That's what we're still held there, but it's not going to.
With that, we've not, we've not appropriated for the lease extension, so we've preserved that legal argument, and, but on the other hand, the money's still sitting somewhere for whatever purpose we need for it to support the 4D office. I think that, from our perspective, that's the best we can do, and I think legally, that's all we can do. And I think at this point, the Commissioners now need to figure out where they can put 4D by the end of the year, or maybe, maybe they're going to reach out to whoever the owners are now, or was before, or office manager once removed, and they're going to, they're going to try to figure out a way to get the lease approved and proper and legal. But that's the balls of the court.
Even if the lease is a negotiation, because we've all been kind of left here hanging.
But the Commissioners have known about this for a long time. These negotiations that you're talking about could have happened months and months ago. It's last minute, not by our fault, that's all I'll say.
So my suggestion, Karen, begs to some of your, if you think about it, some of your concerns, I'm trying to address those. I am. I am trying to, I mean, there was some talk of, we don't set the money aside at all. Well, that's not so good, because then what happens if someone does come to us with fifty-one votes? We do figure out that wherever the 4D is going to land is a great place for them to be, and we don't have the money. So, we want to avoid that.
Right, exactly.
So.
Correct me if I'm wrong, setting aside the money, the nine, and I think it was ninety thousand, six oh one.
Right.
Putting that money in the council line item of contractual truly does give the Commissioners office the option to try to correct the situation. I mean, it's clear, the problem's been clearly identified, we know that. I mean, our goal, and I know the Commissioner's goal should be to find a solution to it, and this gives them the flexibility, if I'm understanding it correctly, as, to consider that as an option.
Yeah, because at this point, we're setting aside money that if they come to us and say what I, what they might be, and I, I've read, you know, Laura Bernanke's, Stafford's concerns, those are concerns that the Commissioners need to take into consideration. If they come back to us and say, we're going to move this 4D office over to the new jail in the restaurant area, we need to address Laura's concerns about, and I won't get a show of them, because I did not see a few of them coming, by the way. But, you know, the, the security issues, and the privacy issues, and all those things that need to be addressed is required by, first of all, decency, but second of all, the notion of not losing our funding, not losing our reimbursement, all those things the Commissioners are going to have to take into consideration. And maybe they come back to us and say, yeah, we can do it, here it is, it's going to cost this much for build-out, we got money sitting there. Or they come back to us and say, look, guys, here's, you know, I can believe it, we can't do it. Well, I'm going to have some choice words for the Commissioners at that point, but the fact of the matter is, we can address our options at that point when they come back to us.
But just to be clear, I think we're looking for the Commissioners, if they do choose to stay in that building, which I am not saying they should, but if they do, everything's got to be handled the correct way, and it's got to be fifty signatures and public meetings. That's the only way I'm on board personally, just speaking for myself.
Truthfully, I feel like, as a council, we are doing our job. We are, we are protecting that money, we are setting it aside, we will ask when the Commissioners tell us what, what they are proposing.
So let's take this down a little bit. Vicki, can you zero out the ninety thousand, six oh one?
Do you want a motion for it?
I think we probably want to address that resolution first, and then, so, whatever. Let's, let's move forward.
Eventually you can file a sub against it.
Let's make a motion to pass a resolution. Harold's high motion.
We've got a first, we've got a second. Is there any more discussion or comments?
Yeah.
You want to read it?
I think there is some more discussion. I mean, you know, 4D, unbeknownst to them, they're the ones that are getting bounced around like a rubber ball. I mean, it really is, you know, unknowing to them, here they're stuck in this circumstance that we put them in, and now they're looking at moving in three months, or moving in two months.
You better be doing the royal we, my friend, because I don't consider myself part of that we.
Well, you know, if they need help, I'm there.
I'm there, I'm there to help them, too, but when you say things like, we put them there.
The reality of it is, well, we're moving the funding, and I want to make sure.
They have a lot of choice.
That there's some latitude with the Commissioners. And the latitude, to me, would be that in negotiation, there's always six or seven different ways to look at something, and Dan will tell you, he has an opinion on liability, but I'll put four other attorneys in the room, and they'll all have some other opinion on liability.
Yeah, but they're wrong, Jeff.
I know, I know, Dan, you're always right. It's okay, I've just come to know that. But, but the reality of this whole situation is, is that I believe you should exhaust every possible solution first, you know? And I think that, whether we look at that lease as invalid, or how damning, damning it's become to us because of what was done during the lease, the reality of it is, we all know that it's not valid. It's not just invalid, it's not valid, period. And so, we're not funding a continuation of the lease because there is no lease. So understanding that was like eye-opening in itself. But if we choose to not even negotiate with the people that own the building, you can bet that they will litigate against us. I can guarantee you that. And then on top of that, you can bet that we're going to spend twenty to forty thousand dollars moving you guys out of the structure, another hundred thousand prepping that building over there to get you into that structure, and then another twenty or thirty thousand to move you to the correct floor where we're at. Now, I would be irresponsible looking at that and saying, I just don't want them to negotiate at all. There's another legal way to do this, it's called a settlement. We could actually have them look at something outside of a lease for a short term and do a settlement without the fifty votes needed. Now, is that something that the public should be aware of? Absolutely. But I am not hardlining the fifty-vote issue. I would like to see at least an option where if the, if the Commissioners felt they could move forward, and we could reach some type of agreement, even if it's for less money, to not dislocate this whole circumstance and let the, the 4D court stay in place, I would be totally for moving forward with this resolution. Being a hard line, and we're going to follow this to the end, and we're going to pound this out now, what are, our end goal is looking at the jail, are we not?
And, you know, and Jeff, what I was going to, just so you know, and I think those are valid, the, the only thing that the resolution is, says, is that the council is not going to appropriate on this lease. That's it.
Right.
And I, I don't think our, by, the resolution.
I don't even think we should have a motion for that, because it's not a lease. We've had a determination.
No, but I think, and there's some talk in the statute and the case law that says you're required to have a resolution.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, but I'm saying there is no lease. I mean, we know that for a fact, because the determination was made on opinion and research that there is no valid lease, so.
And I just, just for, and I, and I'm not disagreeing with you, I just wanted to make sure that you knew that the, the resolution is solely.
Right.
For the appropriation.
Yeah, but I've heard some hard talk about saying, well, this is the only way we're going to accept this, and this is, and, you know, I'm looking at.
That was my opinion.
I'm, I'm looking at, I'm looking at a group of people out here.
Stand your ground.
And I am very familiar with some of the situations that happened in that court, with having kids when I taught, and I can tell you, any disruption in that court system is a major malfunction in what's going on in their lives. And so if we're not fully prepared to move them to another facility, or get something done where there's confidence in where they are, this is going to upset the apple cart. I mean, it's really going to be a mess.
And you understand, Jeff, that I don't disagree with that to a degree. One is, as I said, probably now ad nauseam, the, we do not want to unfund 4D. We, we want to make sure that the 4D office is funded and functioning.
I agree with that, Dan. I agree that you said that, and I agree that you talked about funding it. My focus is, is not having to relocate them. I don't care who owns the freaking building, that's not the issue. I just don't want to have to move them and then remove them again.
And I agree with that, but calling it a settlement, to me, is just resigning a lease and putting us right in this.
It's not a lease.
I would, this is not a thing, but.
A settlement, no, it's not. Because in legal opinion, a settlement is not a lease.
Well, I would not vote for it, and that was my comment. It wasn't, I wasn't commenting for anyone else.
Well, if we, maybe we should keep, and maybe we should keep it simple, and if we're just going to, if, if, is the, the motion to not appropriate and set the monies aside, without any, we're not, the council, my suggestion would be that the, that the motion not be for directing how the monies are going to be used, whether it's for alternate housing, whether it's going to be for some sort of reworking, or however it's, however it's phrased, whether it's just a contingency for housing for 4D. I think if we just keep the resolution simple, because tru, I mean, truly, how it's going to be resolved is outside of this body's bailiwick anyways. I mean, so.
Well, to a degree, except for we'll have to appropriate the funds for whichever direction it goes. Now, I have a motion on the floor for this resolution, although it looks like it might be a resolution.
Yeah.
And this, this is just, as far as losing my understanding is just, again, to invalidate that lease extension that we were never included in to begin with, so that we want to approach. This just takes us out of that, and we're just going to move, move the money over, and we're not, the, the options for the Commissioners are still on the table, all, all the options. This is just.
So, let's clarify that. So if we're doing the resolution as what Dan approved, are we going to get a separate motion for moving the money?
Yes, I'm just, my motion is for the resolution. We'll get to the money.
Very good.
We've got a first, we've got a second. Any other questions or comments?
Karen, then, roll call, please.
Councilmember Rebus?
Yes.
Councilmember Conover?
No.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen?
Yes.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Witten?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bozick?
Yes.
Six to one.
Okay, next up, do we want to discuss where we're moving the money? Yeah. I think that's appropriate. I, my suggestion was to move it to the contractual line item in the county council budget, that's probably the easiest for us to get to later if we need to.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion. First, we've got a second, to move the money to our council budget and contractual. Anyone have any questions or comments in regards to that?
So we're zeroing out that line item.
Yes.
And you can make the corrections for third reading.
Yep, sounds good to me.
Anyone else have any questions?
You know, I think, again, the problem, we've talked about ad nauseam, and, and we've clearly identified it. The goal, as, as I mentioned, should be to resolve it. We, we've got to fix it. And I think doing this by having the money available and giving the Commissioners office some options, it allows them to do what they need to do to potential, to minimize the disruption to 4D, which is incredibly important, minimize the potential risk of potential litigation, which is also important to the taxpayers, and hopefully, and I know that the Commissioners, too, the goal will be, and our goal should be to minimize the cost and expense of the whole process by eliminating unnecessary additional construction costs as a result. So, I, I think, I think we're doing the right thing in terms of leaving the options on the table.
And I'll throw along with that discussion is, if we don't have this resolved, I think that a date, like November seventh, was thrown around, but if we don't have something taken care of prior to that, we've already encroached into the possible completion of moving them into that structure.
So, what's the, yeah, what is that? I'm sorry.
Well, that would be, that would be like an estimated timeframe they would need to actually appropriate or move forward on the construction project. So we could ask Scott if he'd like to step forward and maybe give us some kind of timeframe on how this could all unfold.
What's the question?
Is there a timeframe for all this negotiation to occur?
And you understand that my idea is also, don't, I don't want you to preclude the idea of, I expect this office to be moved by the end of the year if we can't get this resolved. Because we're not going to spend one day, not, not with my vote, anyway, on a lease that's void. So, I guess that question would be the only.
I mean, speaking from what I've heard, I, I think it's clear. I mean, the, the direction is, you've moved the money into your contractual account. What I have not heard is, there's, there is no, there are not four votes to attempt to try to settle this, and so that's, we're, we're going to move them. I mean, I think it's simple as that. I mean, if you guys want to have, I mean, that's, that's where we're at.
And I, I'll, let me clarify.
Hold on, it's, it's pretty, it's just, it's, it's pretty cut and dry.
I, I just want to clarify that.
I wasn't saying that I wouldn't do it, I'm just saying, if it's going to be done like that, and that's what you guys choose to do, it needs to be to the letter of the law. And nothing can be up here.
We don't, we don't have any room to negotiate if we don't have your board's support that we go forward.
But I think the process is, go back and talk. If that, if, there's no other options. If you don't think that it's, it's proper for them, reading Laura's letter, if you don't think it's proper for them to do that, then.
We're trying to do what?
Exhaust the options. I mean, look at your options. If you think the best way to do that, then talk to them and come back and present to us something, but maybe it needs to be presented following the law.
You, you know, so here's the thing, we've made it very clear that, yes, you have to the end of the year to move this. And by the way, that's not extraordinarily off of the timeframe that we asked nine months ago. So, that's not, that's not, let me finish, please, Commissioner. So, the, we're not, you know, so, this isn't something new and improved that we're laying on. This is something that we've been saying for months. So, we got to the end of the year. We know that, that, that hasn't changed, or, you know, there, there it is, still there. And so, go get it. Now, if you want to come back to us later with some other options, this body will entertain it. My suggestion is, don't settle anything until you come back to us. My suggestion is, don't finalize anything until you come back to us, because it's going to do little service to you to come back to us and say, we settled it, we're going to stay there for another two years, and one day, and three hours. And we say, absolutely not. And we consider this a new lease, you better vet it through the process. I mean, so my suggestion is, wherever the road leads you, you know that you need to come back to us and present to this board to fund whichever option you take.
That's kind of what I meant.
Now, you're asking us for a vote right now to, to tell you to go out and.
No, I didn't ask for a vote.
No, you just said, you just said, as did the county attorney, that there hasn't been four votes, and I'm quoting here, and I'm being really good at making sure I remember the mic's on, the, that there hasn't been four votes to settle. That was the, that was the comment.
There's clearly not board support in what we're saying.
So, what you need to do, I think, now, you're the Commissioners, and you're the county attorney, and you're both good at what you do, and my suggestion is, you go forth and come back to us. If something fruitful comes, and you think you've got a solution, but I think that the clear directive is, we need to have a spot for 4D, January first, 2019. I think that's, that's it.
And I think that's moving that money over, I think Mike was saying it, it's clear
I think Mike was saying that it's clear that, I think, there's, the options are on the table. I don't think we ruled out anything.
But we heard you guys say they need to move out. They're moving, we're moving them out.
I don't believe I.
You didn't say that, but I heard other people say that.
I, I think the options are open. I mean, that's, I think that's the point of what we're trying to say.
Just, and also, I also believe that it's unfair to categorize that we said nine months ago, or even six months ago, that we knew what was going on, because we just got the determination on this.
Yeah, but we got it from our lawyer.
A long time ago.
We got it from our lawyer. We knew this, when this was. We knew this was going, and as you may recall, I said a couple of times, make sure we have the option in place. And as you may recall, Commissioner Good sat right there and wanted to debate me on that. Wanted to sit right there and debate me and say, oh, that's gonna be discussed at an executive session. Which, first of all, I'm not sure that's appropriate for an executive session. But second of all, all I said was, it's well within my right to tell you, you better have an option in place. So, yeah, this has been, we, we've been discussing this, and, and we're, we're, so we're done with all that. So, what the remains of the day are this. We've set money aside, or we're presumably going to set money aside. The thought is, we're not gonna pay on a void lease. So, you either need to move them, or if you have some other idea, come on back to us, and we'll talk about it.
Let's not, Dan, let's not forget that I think this all came about because Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but you were making the phone call at the beginning of the year to let the landlords know that we were moving out at the end of the year. And that's where all this started. So, the goal was, we bought the building to move them over, and then that's when you called to let them know, we're, we're leaving. So, where did this take the back burner? We should've been planning from that point in time, yeah, we found out, oh crap, there's an extension nobody knew about, but the plan was always to get them over, that's why we purchased the building in part. So, to say that this is new, that was the plan from the get-go.
That's exactly what I said, because.
And to be clear, there is, the, the plan has progressed on the.
Awesome.
On the 4D space in 157. Let, let's be clear, the putting them in the restaurant isn't that plan. That, the plan progressing to put 4D on the first floor has been going through the planning process. That has been happening. That's not the same as, as this. And, and I'm not trying to argue, I mean, just, that's not the same thing. I, I get what you're saying, but at the end of the day, that's the issue.
So, but this isn't a new subject, is my point.
No, it's just different space, different timing, that's all. And, and again, I'm not trying to pick a fight any more than, you know, we're just, at the end of the day.
To me, I guess I would've thought that, that, then, that call, knowing that, maybe, maybe the Expo Center shouldn't have been the priority. Maybe that, old jail should've been the priority.
No, fair enough.
So that it became the process.
The lease, we, we were on a, at, at that point in time, we were unaware that the lease was void.
Yeah, but that's, but yes, but, hold on, hold on, hold on. That's not necessarily true. So, you, there was an opinion that it wasn't void or voidable, but there was a lot of discussion, certainly, that it could be. And we asked our attorney to craft an opinion, and he did so. And he, and he brought forth some glaring issues with the lease. So, this isn't something that just, I mean, I get it, there was the, the independent, you know, confidential, we can call it that anymore, a legal opinion that was obtained, that came later, but we had lots of conversations.
Sure.
So, we did. But the point is, we're here now, we're here now.
Real quick, Commissioner Biggs had something for us.
Let me just ask the, the council, whatever decision you make, do I, I'm correcting my question to our legal counsel, or the commissioners? That it doesn't jeopardize our standing in the C4D reimbursement, but our government, if we take it out of, out of where it's currently at?
This is Stafford, has a question.
Go ahead.
I just wanna clarify a funding issue. So, first off, we are paying rent in a, in a place. The county runs that money, and the county gets sixty-six percent back. We move into a county building, we become indirect cost, like IT, overcompensating that kind of stuff, which is potentially a lot less money than they would be getting back temporarily pending. The second thing is, any buildout in the restaurant is considered temporary, and we could not use 40 bucks to do that, and it would not be reversible. So, all that would come out of the general. We could not ask for sixty-six percent of that, because it's temporary. Now, the permanent space is a different situation, but anything that, that costs, that temporary cost.
Well, just to clarify, it doesn't necessarily have to come out of the general fund. We have, we have other funds available that are non-general funds. So, I, I understand what you're saying. And, and to that point, and we've had discussions, the, all of us, the, you're right, the indirect, you know, cost or reimbursement might not be sixty-six percent of money we're paying to somebody, but we're not paying rent either. So, you know, there is that. So, but, yeah, we understand that moving you somewhere by the end of the year isn't your forever home, you know, and, and we get that. And we're gonna have to weigh all that into our decision-making if and when options come back to us. And, and I'm telling you, maybe the option is, you're moved January 1st, and then you're moved again nine months later. Which is terrible, but that's, that's the way the lease crumbles. So, you know, we'll weigh that into it, you know, but your points are well made, and we'll take it. Thank you, Laura.
Mr. Biggs?
Just one last, I was, I had a two-part question. I'd just like to ask the county council, whatever decision you make this evening.
Yeah.
Considering everything that's going on here, we cannot turn the clock back to 2014 or, or 2019. But what we can.
Okay, 2099 would be four, just to clarify. Do you wanna confuse it more than one?
You may still be here.
What is this? Like Back to the Future. Go ahead, Dan.
But what I ask you to do this evening is make a decision that allows the commissioners to make the best decision for county government. The damages that's been done up to this point has been done, whether you take a damage or you don't take it, there's any benefit. But what has been done up to this point has been done. Moving forward, please make a decision that allows us to make the best financial decision for county government moving forward.
So, to turn, to take a versatile trip back in time about five minutes, that's what we're doing. So, we're setting the money aside. The thought is, you're gonna move 4D. If you come up with something different, come back to us, love to talk with you about it. I mean, honestly, this is terrible. This is a terrible situation that's been befell upon us, and it's just, we gotta deal with it. So, my motion's on the floor, move that money to the contractual line item of the county council, and I think it's been seconded. So, I guess I'd like the question.
Well, I guess I'd like to make another statement or ask another question. With this money, we're gonna put aside in our budget for contractual. Does it tie their hands, the commissioners' hands, to not be able to negotiate staying in the current space if something can be negotiated? I'm concerned about putting this government in jeopardy of implications.
We're not gonna put the government in jeopardy, and furthermore.
I think we are.
No, that's silly. And this, putting the money aside does not, it doesn't preclude them from going out and trying to find other resolution. That's why we're putting the money there. That's the polar opposite.
So, that, that, they can bring back a plan that hopefully agrees with you.
Yeah, that would be, if they want my vote, yeah, of course. And I'm telling you, this, this whole face, now, this, we're not talking about the, the leasing of a fax machine here. I mean, there are serious implications to the office that, that is supposed to function in there, and there's serious implications to how this, how this came about. Serious implications. So, yes, I'm looking at this with a real jeweler's eye. So, yeah, I would really, let them come back to us. I'm, I'm open to discussion. Come back to us, and we're gonna weigh all the things, the things that Laura just told us, that the cost of litigation, the, what the potential looks like, making sure that we don't do something that runs afoul of the state statute. We've had enough of that. So, no more closed-door, backdoor meetings over whatever person's office. We're gonna do it all right here. It's all gonna happen here in the open, and we're gonna, we're gonna air this thing out, and we're gonna fix it.
Dan Whitten, have you not had coffee with our attorney on occasion?
Have.
Do you need to check that out with Jeff Good?
Let me tell you something. I have never, ever taken a legal opinion from this board or that board and taken it to somebody that's on the other side. And reveal, and reveal. It's not, it's, wait a minute, he doesn't own it. He doesn't own it. What do you, what do you mean, the vendor?
You're right.
He doesn't own it. But the fact of the matter is, clearly, all this talk of potential litigation, he's not on our side, the vendor. The vendor's on the other side. That's how litigation works. And to think that you would take confidential, confidential, come on, man.
Confidential?
Legal opinion that these taxpayers have paid for and reveal it. Reveal it to the other side before you tell anybody.
It's not confidential.
Yes, it was. Before you tell anybody on the first, you couldn't pick up the phone, you couldn't make a text, you couldn't tie a note to a rock and throw it through somebody's window, but you found the time. He didn't even tell his own commissioner. All right, that's my thing.
I have some points there, but let's move forward. All right, my motion's on the floor. Okay, we've got a first, we've got a second. Is there anything further?
The only thing is, this is getting us out of over a half a million dollars of a contract that was not presented to this body. Over a half, I mean, over 500, no, let me get it right, $500,000, over a ha, you know, over a half a million dollars of a lease that was not presented to this board. When I asked, and I was on here, when does it expire? It's 2018. That's what I'm looking at.
The lease is void.
Everything, everything is on the table as far as I'm concerned.
That's in fact for itself, because it's only 30,000 we're on the hook for every year. So, I said, that's incorrect, too. We're only on the hook for 30,000 because they pay 66% of the lease.
It's taxpayer dollars that we're working out.
So, so, any other?
A lease that wasn't bought in front of us.
Okay, but it's not. It's done, it's void.
Yeah, that's fine, but.
Okay, we've got a motion, we've got a second. Roll call, please, Mr. Biggs.
Councilmember Conover?
I, I don't even know what I'm voting on. I wasn't.
We're moving on, we're moving on.
A money, okay, in, in a contractual line item, yep.
Just moving on, correct.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen?
Yes.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitten?
Yes.
Councilmember Bozek?
Yes.
Councilmember Revis?
Yes.
And that's seven to zero.
Motion carries. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Scott. Okay, next up, we have a few other housecat keeping items as far as increases.
Thank you.
Give a minute for the room to clear.
Shouldn't we do, shouldn't we do that?
We did, we did.
Roll call?
Yeah, we passed that.
We just need to sign it.
All right, what do we move it on to?
All right.
What do we have to clean up?
Yeah, let's discuss the health department. She had come to us. You guys wanna speak now? You guys wanna come down and explain?
Your turn.
Oh, no, no, no. Energy's expended now, we're good. So, you guys are looking to increase some salary raises, correct?
Yes, for the part-time staff.
Okay. And we're, you're going to, where are you going up from?
The increase of a dollar.
Dog, uh, just a dollar.
Just a dollar increase? And you're not asking for any more in your budget for the.
No.
Just want it up to?
Yeah.
Okay. I make the motion.
We've got a first, a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen?
Yes.
Councilmember Larson?
Please step down.
Please step out. Councilmember Whitten?
Yes.
Councilmember Bozek?
Yes.
Councilmember Revis?
Yes.
And Councilmember Conover?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, um, do we wanna look at the.
Well, I have a, I have a question. I mean, sort of generally speaking, we, you know, in just in conversations, and yes, one or two of us were silverbunch, was the talk about the, what did we do with the special raises versus the 4%? So, was it 4% on top of the special raise, with the special? So, I kinda wanted to just sort of revisit that, so we can make sure we're on the same scene.
It's my understanding that the question is, do we give 4% raises on current salaries, and then the special raises get added? Not, not 4% on the special raises?
I would agree with you, yeah.
That's true.
And I think Vicky confirmed that earlier, that we're, if someone's making an amount today, that was the 4%, we gave a 4% increase on that and then gave the special raise. So, you didn't get the 4% on the special raise.
You gave two different raises. That's how we approached it. Because if we gave a special raise then a 4%,
You're up.
we're really getting ourselves potentially.
So, that is what you're doing. Clarification. Something I wanted to bring up, you know, we, we, we did for the plan commission, that this couple of employees were getting some large raises, like $10,000. And we, the last time we passed it, we discussed they were also gonna get the 4%. I have a concern with that, because the reason we didn't give our IT director the 4% was because we gave him such a large raise. So, in my opinion, we either need to change what we're doing and not give that 4% to the, uh, excuse me, what? Oh, the 4% to the plan commission in addition to their special raise, or we need to do it for the IT director. Give him the 4% and the $10,000, just to be fair, because what we did, to me, wasn't very fair. Does anyone else have any thoughts on that, or?
Well, do we give 4% on their current salary and then the special raise on top of that? That makes a difference.
Well, I think those are large raises, $10,000 raises, $7,000 raises. In my opinion, like, I think what happened with Don, we said no to the 4% because he's getting a $10,000 raise. I think we should just follow that. I don't think the 4% raises should go to the plan commission on top of 10,000, 7, 7, and 10. Let's go along the path that we did with Don and another person, I believe.
I personally think that makes sense. I, I don't know what everyone else's thoughts are on that, it just seems.
So, your suggestion is then to, you know, I don't know. So, one thing we did one year was, and, and I know Vicky would cringe at this, maybe, but we said, look, if we gave someone a special raise, and that was more than 4%, they get, they just got the special raise. If it was less than 4%, we gave them the 4% instead. And maybe that's the simplest way to do this.
My fear with that is what Vicky brought up. When we were doing Vicky's raises for her department, she said the reason we had to, she had to get special raises was even out what we created last year, correct?
Yes, and you didn't give me my request.
It hasn't been correct.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, I think that's, I continue that. Yeah, I think that's a slightly different issue, though. But go ahead, Vicky.
Yes, mine, mine was a special request, mine was a special raise. And you did give a few other special raises and 4% to some others. Others just got the special raise. Others just got the 4%. Most just are getting the 4%.
So, wouldn't it seem, from you as the auditor, doesn't it seem logical to tell you, I don't know if you can, how quickly you can do that, but calculate what a 4% raise would be? If that's more than a special raise, that's what they get. If it's less, they get that special raise, that'd be approved.
Doesn't that, does that not throw off what happened in your department?
That's what I was thinking. They're just starting the problem again for next year.
Yeah.
Now, we're gonna have more people on the level.
Well, that would be, okay, that would be my request. Are you going, are you sticking with that policy with my request? If so, then we'll adjust it that way. Or are you going case by case and saying?
We're gonna be here all night.
I'll go back, I'll go back and revise my, my request to, to change the number so it's just a special request.
I'm sure you would be the only one in the county.
So, we got time for more meetings, pass us the budget?
No, we don't.
That's what I'm saying.
No, we have to pass it.
I mean, I don't care, I'm just saying.
You know, quite simply, I think a few of us have, certainly, I feel like we're, we're being more than generous, giving a 4% across the board and having either or. You get the special raise or the 4%.
You wanna make a.
That's how we've done it in the past. Isn't that what you're, you were saying, Dan?
Didn't your policy?
Yes.
Then I bet you corrected our policy. You needed us to refine that.
Yeah, our policy was causing you.
That's just in my department.
Well, that was doing it to other departments, too, I'm sure.
Not necessarily.
No, it isn't. She has a very unusual.
I mean, I see you, I mean.
She, she was given a problem that hasn't been corrected yet.
So, look, so the thought is, if somebody, yeah, so, I, I get it. So, the thought is, if somebody comes in front of us and says, man, this, this, this position's got to be $4,000 more to be competitive. And we give them 4,000, don't give them the percentage raise, now they're falling behind because other people got the percentage raise that were already much, not, were playing catch-up. I get that. But, I mean, we've got some folks in this county that are ending up with a 13% 21% raise, maybe. I mean, things that are just so skewed.
Yeah, okay, totally.
But just a thought, I mean, again, I'm not.
I'm open to both. I'm just throwing out my opinion on it, but I am open to whatever. Someone needs to make a motion, though.
No, I, I, I agree with Dan. There's 16%, 16%, 19 and a half, 22% raise.
Crazy.
And we're, you know, we're only giving 4% to 98% of the county. So I think we're being fair when we give a special raise at $10,000 and say, "By the way, you're not getting the 4%."
Right.
I mean...
So do people just go, "I can ask for more next year?" I'm just asking, I don't know.
Would it be as simple as saying, "It's either the special raise or the 4%, whichever is greater?"
That's what I said.
Second.
You make a motion?
I make the motion.
Second. First and second. Any questions or comments in regards to that? So it's going to be the higher of the two, the either special raise or the 4%? Chief Bickner.
No. One of the departments, uh... One of the departments is asking for a $1,400 increase to our GIS operator. And for whatever reason, I think I mentioned to the council, I don't know how it happened, but he's paid $1,400 less than our operations, our body assurance operator who's part of our staff. What I was trying to do is bring parity. I was asking for the increase based on the job that the individual's doing and not the person. You know, he's one of the lowest-paid mapping persons in the state. We're fortunate to have him, and the increase is based on his job and not really, doesn't matter who is in that position. And what happened with this is that I was asking for some parity with the administration. If he isn't given his increase prior to the 4%, I'm still going to be in a situation where he's making $1,400 less than the person working next to him.
That's kind of...
So... So if it's the higher of the two, the higher raises, which I understand, then, I mean, he's still going to be making less money than my other administrator. So that's why I'm just sharing with the council, just kind of bringing that up. We did do a job analysis and looked at his job description, and we're trying to get him based on the job he does, as opposed to just looking at him as the individual. So I just appreciate the opportunity to share that.
Thank you, Mike.
And I think that's kind of what I was trying to get across, is I think we, by doing it the way that we've just moved, could be causing more problems next year.
All right, we've got a motion, we've got a second. Any questions or comments?
I just think that some of those departments that got those large increases have seen double or triple their workload in some of those departments. And we've got engineers that are making $115,000, working for a director that's making $90,000.
May not pass.
So I guess I'm kind of questioning the logic, and some of those we haven't addressed for a couple of years. I think planning, we didn't address the raises last year other than the 4%. And that workload's been added for two years now, and there's been no addressing in those salaries. I just, I get that you guys are just looking at 16% raises, but we've increased, we've been trying to get these departments up where there is some direction in the department.
And just to, you know, on that point, I mean, keep in mind that we did kind of address plan commission. I think that the commissioners pulled the request.
They did. And that was...
And they have reasons.
We kind of laid that back on them, and they had some reasons and discussions, but that's been the second year that they haven't. And so...
And I just... I'm sorry, what are you doing? I agree with you, Jeff. I think personally, I'm going to be voting no on this because I'd like us to see, do the 4% and then add the special raise for reasons that Chief, Mr. Bickner's brought up and things that we saw in Vicky Urbannick's department. So that's my opinion. Any other questions or comments?
I'm dying to hear the vote.
Roll call, please, Mr. Bickner.
What, can I ask?
His motion was, the motion is the higher of the two.
Either the 4% raise, the motion is, or the special raise.
The special raise be approved. Not all the ones we didn't, but the ones we approved.
Right.
So...
Did you get that?
I'm dying to hear this vote. Let's roll.
So that applies even to the ones that you agreed earlier, or tentatively agreed?
It changes. Nothing happens till final reading.
Exactly.
Let's roll.
Okay, 4% or higher.
It ain't got passed, let's just get on with it.
Uh, Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
No.
Councilmember Whitten.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick.
No.
Councilmember Rivas.
No.
Councilmember Conover.
No.
And Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Okay, so it is four to three, four no votes, three yes.
Okay, I don't know if someone else has a motion. Again, I would like to suggest that we do the 4% raise and then add the special raises in on top of that for everybody besides the juvenile probation officer, because he already got a special raise and a state mandated raise. My opinion, I don't know what you guys have thoughts on.
So you want to add, you want to go back in the ones that we specifically said weren't getting both, you want to change that?
In my opinion, that's only one, correct? That's just on...
I just want to be clear. I wasn't, I wasn't...
No, I just want to make sure I'm clear that it's only him.
No, big guy. I'm just trying to get a handle on you.
I can't make a motion because I'm...
I'll make the motion.
We got a motion, we've got a second. For the 4% raise and the special raise.
Just for the IT director.
That's the only one that would change, everything else is approved.
Can you guys let us know where we are, though?
Yeah, as part of the discussion, let's talk about how much it's going to cost.
Oh, that's a not-for-all idea.
Very good. Good point, Mike.
Vicky will crack that.
Don is the only addition, right?
Right, so we give him the 4% raise.
Or Don, man, jeez.
Don gets beat up. Good thing you're tall and tough.
Come up later.
You came up with 339.
Do we have the money?
That's what we're going to find out. We don't know what it is.
I got a word there, Joe, a word there? Hey, you're welcome. Ms. Joy takes care of us. Wait, wait, wait. Yeah, all right, that's... I mean, it's a matter, we're talking about one guy, and I don't care.
Yeah, I mean, it can't be a lot.
But I just want to be clear, so we're doing... So the thought is...
We're giving us all the...
We're giving the percentage on the current pay and then the special raise on top of that.
We're going to argue for the correct, though. But the other thing that I'm asking for...
Andy's talking. Don't you guys remember the microphones are on?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Bickner.
That's a unique thought, Dan. What did I want to say?
Mental note. Move the microphone. So...
So you get one or the other.
We discussed the percentages.
On the current pay, make the percentage on the current pay and then start with the rest.
Sylvie and I had the discussion about 4% was killing us.
Three, three and a half was the better. Are you suggesting, so I understand everybody's thought, that we give a percentage on the current, if we give a special raise, we give a percentage on the current pay plus then the special raise on top of that? So it's not...
Right, it's not on the...
I want to make sure I understand.
Not on the current pay.
You know, I like to avoid acrimony, so I like to just air all this out before then.
Does that make sense?
Makes sense to me.
Andy, does that make sense?
That's what I thought it was, yes, sir.
I'm still waiting to find out if that's...
So can we support this thing? Although that one change, this is over the top, we're in trouble.
We got to get a number from the auditor.
She told it. That's what they're...
Get it easy, Sylvie, it's easy, just on everybody's case tonight.
No, it's for the...
Well, take it, this is supposed to be a friendly meeting, say, "Hey, do that, Sylvia, speak."
Yeah, I don't think you want to be cutting her off.
Don't get me started. My sidebar. Don't get me going with my sidebar comment. Just going to scoot over here.
The largest loose cannon incident I think.
If you guys wanted to stick with the absolute maximum of 1.2, we're over it.
We're over.
Yes, and now we're trying to calculate if I can...
So let me, if I could just ask, if I dare, what, how far, so this one change, we made the one salary, was over?
We were so close to the maximum with everything that we did.
4% on what he makes now?
Yes, yes.
How much difference? $3,500?
But all the...
$3,500 of a big old, a maximum of $1.42 mil?
You got two CTA's telling you yes.
Wow. Take out Dan's salary.
Second.
That was the budget, not the max levy. We're not sure what that will be.
So, okay. So we're doable with this number?
Just go.
Okay, we've got a motion, we've got a second. Any more questions or comments?
We're going to...
What are we doing with this?
You guys made a really good motion on the table. But we were already in trouble before this, correct? I mean, $3,500...
No, no, no.
$3,500...
That's how close we are.
So before, if we don't do anything for...
Let's not draw attention to...
I'm not singling Don.
No, no, I didn't mean that. No, no, I wasn't saying that by any means. I was just wondering. I, that isn't Don we were...
Get it easy, Andy, man, you're really, you're really on the...
About to wake up, man.
Following your lead.
I hate it, too. You got to put on the show, man. So let's just have this, let's just have this vote. Oh, oh, oh.
Let's have the vote.
I'm all in.
Okay, hold on a minute, let's get a clarification on how the wage was increased.
We did 4% on the raise, I mean, on the salary that's current. Then we added the special raise.
Not including the 4%.
No, no. We gave two different raises.
Okay, so the 4% was on the original salary.
We did not increase people's salary and then 4%.
That's my... Can we have that vote?
Albeit the largest component of the budget, how confident are you, Vicky, that the other components of the budget at the end of the night were going to be in good shape?
You never put her on the spot like that in a public meeting.
Is that the guy that always puts her on the spot?
No, I do it regularly, at lunch.
But we expect the general fund. I wanted to go no more than 1.2 million, so we're a little bit over that right now.
That's 1.2...
Can you give us the real number? Okay, no, we don't.
Trust me on this, you don't want to go back.
$1,200,000, $300,000, $3,400. There goes it.
I don't think we've ever gone over.
I'll give up my vote.
Doesn't affect the general.
Oh, no.
Your grandma was telling us.
Now I do feel bad.
We need some insurance money. Or cut it from somewhere else.
Well, where can we cut it from?
I'm sure we can find it. It's $3,500.
I'd like to take care of it before...
Well, and that's the other thing, Vicky suggested that we do a final reading for the salary ordinance next meeting, because that just has to be done before the end of the year.
In general fund. When is that next meeting going to be, Thanksgiving week or the week before?
It's a good conversation to have. It's scheduled for the...
When is it, 27?
Oh, it is for the 27th, so it's the weekend. So let me...
Okay, there you go. We got a plan here.
I take that week on vacation to put up the lights.
So you want to keep all those other raises?
Pronounced, pronounced. So we had a little more wiggle around there.
All right, so I think we probably need to talk about a couple of these other, I want some clarification on a couple of others, though, before we finish up the evening.
So are we good with that? Did we take a vote?
Do we take a vote?
I don't know if we want to, because some of what we're going to talk about now, if we change those, might actually have some impact. Although it might not, because a lot of these are not general fund. That's fine, then we'll come back to these.
So we got a motion and a second to give the 4% raise to Don in addition to after that 4% raise, the special raise of $10,000.
Is there any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Bickner.
Okay, yes. Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitten.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivas.
Yes.
Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
And Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Okay, so that's zero.
This isn't it, Sylvia, we still have another opportunity to...
Good. So is that our plan to address the final adoption of the salary ordinance, the reading of November 27?
I would hope that we would finally address that.
I wanted to...
Want to go through those nine general fund items?
I did, I wanted to ask a couple of questions. I wanted to get some clarification on a couple of things, and I think I want to address them a little bit. One was, on the prosecutor's budget, not the two deputies that I clearly made my opinion in opposition of that raise.
You had an opinion of that?
I did, but the other two.
It's on the third page of the newspaper.
The other... No, that's the insulting part. You're going to get me pressed, get me on the front page, Amy. So the, I'm talking about the...
Lie, lie, Dan, go.
Oh, I know that. Get me started. Not the deputies, but the other two. At one point, the prosecutor said, "Those are so important to me, I'm going to come back and ask for those out of non-general fund budget." But we never did that.
We never addressed them.
We never addressed that. And so do we want to address that now?
Which two are you talking about? There's only one of them that's a deputy.
So you've got, I mean, it's all just a credible shell game. So the county court supervisor is a deputy and the county domestic violence deputy is a deputy. Then we have the office manager, and then we have the court manager, county court, that's over at court. So a couple of questions. One is, the office manager, okay, so we have two, those two were separate than the vote we took on the county court supervisor and the domestic violence deputy, which I strongly disagree with. The, but the other two, I want to talk about those because we didn't.
The office manager, that one, he said if we're going to fight over nickels and dimes, he's going to pay it out of...
Some other fund.
Some other fund.
So my question, or my concern was, one of these people has 500 and some hours of comp time. 500 and some hours of comp time. Now, that's miles ahead of anybody even close to that. So that's a problem. And what I, and we have a county ordinance that says, you know, limits that, but I know a lot of folks went over. The fact of the matter is, 500 and some hours of comp time. went over, the fact of the matter is, 500 and some hours of comp time. We made a proclamation that we wanted them to address that, but prosecutor said, "I'm gonna make her exempt, and I wanna raise her salary." Okay, but then I asked the county attorney, "Do we need to raise her salary to make her exempt?" And the county attorney said, "No, it's fine the way it is." Now, I intended to take that back up when we actually voted on it, but we didn't, so, I mean, what, what are your, what do you guys wanna do with the office manager and court manager? And, and do you know what fund you wanted to take it out of?
Yeah, are we doing anything, has it been presented?
It was the other night.
He didn't tell us the fund, and he didn't come back. And I think that, by the way, might have just been, you know, he, he just didn't get it, but I mean, he didn't. And I, and I wanted, that's why I want us to address it now.
Well, he did, he did say that, that he was willing to do that.
I mean.
Out of where?
Out of where? I, I'm not, I'm not, listen, I'm not voting to give the $3,000 special raise to somebody that has 500 and some hours of comp time. I'm just telling you that, I'm not, I'm not voting for that, but you guys might. And if you do, then the question becomes, from where?
Yeah, I don't know how we vote on it, it wasn't presented. Where? Or is it coming out?
I don't know. Where did he, did he talk to you sort of privately? Did he sign any sort of contracts with you or anything like that? No? All right, what do you got?
No, um, I think it was based on either some of the written, or what he said during the meeting. We just put it out of his Fund 2503.
Yeah, let's just pick one and have a vote on it. I mean, let's just.
And that's what we did, we just put it in there, but I appreciate wanting the clarification and.
So, tell me the fund that you think he wants it out of.
Pretrial Fund 2503, that's what we put in the salary ordinance, assuming this is gonna stay. And so that was an additional $3,000 raise for the one position, and an additional $5,119 for the other person. That's in addition to the four percent raise. So, we put those two special raises in 2503.
All right, so I think we should probably vote on that.
Okay.
All right, do we have a motion? Do we need a motion? We need a motion.
We do need a motion.
Someone motion?
Motion.
To, to do what? To clarify.
To award that, those salaries increases. Out of that fund.
So your motion is to give.
Not general fund money.
Right, I get that. So is your motion then to give, like, for example, the person with 500 and some hours of comp time, a $3,000 bump and a four percent raise? 'Cause that's what's in front of us.
Has, has that person been paid?
Like, for the back comp time?
Yes.
I don't know.
I don't remember that.
I thought his suggestion was, he was gonna have her, he was gonna try to pay some out of non-general fund, he was gonna have her take some time off. I mean, frankly, the explanation was.
It has to be cleaned up.
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was, it was not a good explanation, and it wasn't.
Well, then, because of this past due comp time that needs to be paid out, I would say the four percent raise.
Right.
Because that comp time is substantial.
Right.
County fund. I don't care what fund it comes from.
Okay, so we have a motion for just the four percent, dropping the special raises off the bolt? Or no, just one, I'm sorry. You know, I don't, I don't care so much about the other one, and I understand that the court manager up in Portage, he's, I, I got that part of it, he's trying to bring her up, and, and I'm okay with that.
Is that kind of equalized?
I think it does. I think, I think, listen, I'm just gonna say it, I'm just gonna say it.
Say it, okay.
The, the mic's live. No, so historically, and this isn't, this isn't a political state, but historically, oh, it's political. Historically, the prosecutor has not come and asked for raises for his department. He's cherry picked, for whatever reason. Maybe he's, you know, and as I said in the meeting, I get the phone calls from his staff, I think this is one that has been left behind.
Okay, well, let's bring the second person up to that pay of the first person.
Court manager, county court?
Yes, and then allow the four percent raises and call it a day.
Second.
Are you okay with that, Mike?
So what we're saying is, the court manager gets the special raise of 5,119. In addition to a four percent raise. Just, and just so I'm clear, office manager, no special raise. And fourteen, uh, four percent, 1895.
Yes.
Yes.
And the rationale behind that is?
I think that his explanation is the court, of the court manager in Portage, although didn't take any ownership of it, was that this person's been woefully left behind, and he needs to bring her up to be parity with the other, you know, people of like and kind level in Valpo. I think that was his explanation, so it made sense, actually.
And, and we're saying the office manager, due to the comp time and that sort of thing, we're less comfortable with that.
Yes. That's right. Yeah, we've got a motion, we've got a second. Any further questions or comments?
Go ahead, Vicki.
Vicki, did you have a question? I'm sorry.
If we gave the special raise and the four percent to the court manager, county court, she is still under the other court manager.
That's what he requested.
He wanted to bring her up.
No, you're not here to advocate for the prosecutor, that's what he, that's what he asked.
So it doesn't, it's my office.
I think the point is what Dan said, he's done a poor job of fighting for the right people.
All right, we've got a first, we've got a second. Vicki, roll call, please.
And they're different calls.
And this is the roll call, just to be clear, we approved the special and four percent for the county court manager, but only the four percent for the office manager.
That is correct, yes.
Very good. Councilmember Whitten?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Bozick?
Yes.
Councilmember Revis?
Yes.
Councilmember Conover?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen?
Yes.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Okay, seven to zero.
All right, so the other thing that I know someone.
Is the assessors.
There you go.
Yes.
John, you might wanna leave a room for this.
Okay, so, we were discussing, Vicki, do you know what the stipends were, so we increased, wasn't there a difference between the Portage Township Assessor and our Assessor and their stipends?
We equalized them.
We equalized them?
There was a doubt.
Currently? I think no matter what we do, they need to be equalized.
Actually.
There's concerns.
We equal. Why are we, yeah, but why were we giving the stipends? Why were we increasing it? They've already got that, you know, the 1,000, the 2,000, and that.
Can I see what they were?
Yeah, what part of our book is this?
Do you wanna look at the Portage stipends?
Well, first of all, you gotta look at the schedule. See what night we have.
It's just.
Do you excuse? No, I, I had to ask permission of late. I let him go. I don't know if you guys knew this, but I'm, I'm returning to the stage at the Opera House.
I heard it was.
What they were. What they were. I haven't even heard what they were.
That was in my memo.
I heard it was a general show.
Ah, you shouldn't go. So.
What were the stipends?
The stipends right now are 1,000 if you're a level two.
You'll always be applying them, you know.
And 1,000 if you're a level three, meaning that if you're a level three, you get 2,000. It's two.
Is that the same, is it currently the same in 2018? Is it currently the same for the county assessor and the township assessor?
Correct, yes.
So 1,000 frees, but it compounds, so if you, once you get the three, you also get the one, the two and the three.
1,500, 1,500 that we approved, 1,200, so they get.
Well, it was 1,000 and 1,000.
Right, right.
And originally, the original request, which goes back in time here, like about a couple months ago.
Can we talk about the reassessment fund?
Yes.
Is it healthy? Where's it going? How much is in it? How much is in it, is it, what direction are we heading in? Why are, how many questions are you gonna lay on her at one time?
Yeah.
Where are we headed? Where are we going? Where have we been?
It's a property tax supported fund, so it's under the same levy limitations as the general fund, health fund, et cetera.
Is it healthy? How much is in it, is it healthy, Vicki?
My projections show that by including the new stipends in, the, the funds should have state approval, but we will be cutting the operating balance quite a bit, which could set up problems down the road. And I would be remiss if I did not share that.
So we're heading in the wrong direction with that fund, and we're, we're at, what? Huh? Hello? John, come on up. Make your big point to us.
We asked for additional because the state has increased the educational requirements and required that everybody have these level twos and level threes to be able to handle property tax matters, and so, and we frankly haven't touched it for six or seven years. So that's, that's the reason why we asked for an increase.
You mean, you haven't touched it? There's things coming out of it.
Yes, yes.
So what are you saying?
You haven't touched the compensation?
You haven't touched the compensation, correct, I'm sorry, yes.
Why do you think it's heading in the wrong direction? I guess where this pops up is that.
It's heading in the wrong direction.
The assessment fund, the reassessment fund, that you're getting these out of.
That's the first I've heard of that.
So I guess I'm asking this question because for the Portage Township Assessor.
Yeah, but in her defense, there'd be no reason to tell you that. 30 years ago.
No, 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 no. Um, John, when they approved all those different raises the other night, then we had to crunch all the numbers.
Okay.
And that's when we started looking at the health of the various funds.
Okay.
And, like I said, even if you have this in next year's reassessment budget, I believe it will probably pass state muster. It's within the levy limitations. But the fact that we're cutting into the operating balance instead of keeping it level, we could be setting up a problem for down the road. So then, at that point, you'll have to decide where you're going to, if you're going to cut something else in the budget, or if you're going to fund the stipends from another company.
Can you explain where this fund comes from, John? How this money.
It's, it's based on the tax rate, it's separate from the general fund, it varies from year to year.
Does it increase from year to year?
It can increase too, if we ask for an increase, which I think we did last year.
Well, please ask for one. Every year, every year.
Well, no, it's limited to the state growth quotient, so you're limited to the same levy increase as, say, the general fund.
Right.
But the miscellaneous revenue that comes into this fund is, is very minor compared to, like, say, the general fund, so it's, it's a very narrowly focused fund, the reassessment fund.
But, but we, we evaluated the fund, we looked at, we looked at adding these increases, we felt very comfortable with this. We've never had a, I've never had to come to you guys in eight years now and say, "Oops, sorry, I made a mistake," and that's with doing a lot of cutting in my budget, probably more than any other department represented here today, and so.
John, I don't think that this isn't an indictment on your performance.
I understand, I'm not, I'm not asking.
It's a numbers game, or, yeah, we're asking her, I think Jeremy asked her, the sustainability of it long term.
Sure.
And it, we know you've, and it's really coming from what I saw as three different raises from the Portage Township Assessor. A special raise, a four percent raise, and an increase in the stipend.
And I don't wanna do anything to disparage what she's done, I'm actually quite surprised she got as far along with it that she did. I, I didn't, I, I told her, it's a plane, it's never gonna fly, but it did, so, well, I don't know, here we are. Now, my staff members are pointing, or the, the assessor's employees are from the county are like, "Well, wait a minute," you know what, so it, it's just, it's just how it goes in this building from year to year, and I, I would come back next year and try to mimic in some ways. I know that Mr. Jessen asked me about equality in some ways at some point, and why aren't we not on the same playing field, and we talked about historical data to suggest that the county assessor takes on, employees here take on more responsibilities than township assessor, and that's, that's just a fact of the matter and how it's always been. And so, you know, equalizing may not be a bad idea, but it's not something that's been done, and there's evidence to say, to suggest why it shouldn't be equalized.
Well, do you have just an idea, John, of the numbers of additional work that the county employees do versus township? I mean.
Yeah, I mean, just in general volume, we have three fourths of the county versus one fourth of the county in rough numbers, so we have a lot more counter volume. We have a Pita Bola board that requires two of my staff members, basically full time, one for exemptions, which we've had a lot of fun with lately, and personal property at a higher volume, just about everything that we touch is at, is at a higher volume. Phone calls, people coming in to file appeals at the counter, that's just, that's just how it goes. I mean, if you looked at her appeal volume versus mine, it's, it's astronomical difference.
Maybe, maybe I'm pulling you into this.
Okay.
Because of, just see, three diff, they're getting three raises.
Correct.
You know, special raises, four percent, and a stipend, so I, I guess you're being dragged into this conversation, because I don't know how to correct this. 'Cause right now, that would move, I don't even know.
What if we just left the levels the same as they were this year? Would that throw things more into line? Would that be a solution, a workable solution, if we didn't?
Then that's hurting his office.
Yeah, that, that would be a morale issue for my office, as well as just in fairness thing, it wouldn't, but, you know, like I said.
Well, you'll still get the four percent, in my opinion, it just wouldn't be, we wouldn't increase any of the levels for either of your offices.
Right.
That's just a thought, just as a.
But then Portage is getting a boost in their outside of those levels.
You're getting special raises.
I think, I think, well, we don't wanna do that, but I just think it maybe take away the stipend increase at the Portage level, but then we're not getting any closer to what Mr. Jessen would like to see.
It's a toughie.
It's a toughie.
Anyone got any thoughts, suggestions, motions?
Because it is coming out of reassessment, and I feel that it's a, a healthy move, I don't, I don't see why there's a, a problem here, and it, and what I told our employees here is if the Portage Assessor is successful at this, then we'll just come back next year and, and use the same data she did to back up her claims.
So we approved this, you're coming back.
Why not, why wouldn't you? I mean, raise, raise, raise.
Keep on trucking.
But, listen, all fairness, we, you have this fund, and, and you're, rightfully so, you're able to use it, however, we try to keep parity with, with different departments, you know, we tried that, and it doesn't work very well, but we, we still try. And by giving these raises, your, your department is going to be steps ahead of others.
He's asking for less of an increase than.
Yeah, he's not, he's just looking at the four percent in level two and three increase.
What you have to understand is our employees have to go through exception, I mean, more stringent training than they have ever been required to do before, for it to get a level two, and then to get a level three, you have to take even more.
Do you mean that, wait a minute, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you mean that the state could take away their level?
Yeah, if you don't keep up with your continuing education, correct, you would lose your levels.
But, okay.
These are, these are special certificates outside of what everybody else is doing here.
Has anybody ever lost their level, whatever they're at?
Only if they don't take their.
No, has your department ever lost anybody?
Not that I'm aware of, only if they leave their employment, and then they don't, they no longer need it.
You know, I mean, I guess, Vicki, you, you made a, you made a comment, a response to Jeremy's question, which intrigued me. You, you said that you, you don't think, I mean, this, this would pass muster next year, but long term, it would be problematic.
It could be, yes. I mean, when, you know, the fund in 18 ended with less of a balance than the prior two years, and we're cutting into the operating balance. You may wanna look at funding the levels out of the general fund.
No, we've always thought of it that way, it's never been.
So, I mean, you see what she's saying, the balance going down, and it's trending, it's obviously trending, isn't it?
But there's always a balance, I mean, that's, that's.
It's the same concern that I presented to you over the health insurance fund. It's not at a crisis mode, but I need you to understand that.
It's trending in the.
We're, we're, we have to think ahead, and we have to look ahead, not that it's a crisis, but it needs to be on your radar.
In future years, I can go in and ask for an additional amount of levy, if I'm saying that right.
So, you guys want to leave it as it is, or wanna make some motion?
You know, here, I'd like to make a comment. The, I mean, we're, we're talking to the county assessor. Hasn't he asked for any special raises? Am I right on that?
That's right.
Uh, four, four percent, which is the countywide increase, and you are saying, you know, level two, level three, there's, there's certainly merit in increasing those, and I think, Vicki, if I remember right, I think you kind of also agreed with that concept in terms of the additional training and education needed and all that sort of thing, that the, the level twos and level threes, that's a warranted sort of increase. Did I misinterpret that for you?
I'm not sure.
Okay, so I'm gonna put that aside for a minute. I'm gonna put that aside for a minute.
But, no, I did speak to that, it does take additional training to get the level, I'm a level two.
Right. And so there's a lot more to it than I think most of us probably understand or appreciate that aren't involved in that business. Now, we look at the county assessor's proposed increase, and if I'm reading this right, it's showing 5.6% increase, 4.9% increase, which seems, you know, in line or reasonable. And what we talked about before was, as we talked about the parity, saying, hey, the Portage Township Assessor and the chief deputy ought to be more similar to Valpo, and we could argue that back and forth. They're asking for a significant special raise, and they're also gonna get the four percent, and they'd also get that level two and level three increase, so those increases are more like 11.6% and 9.9%. So would it be right to say, let's leave these special raises, John's not asking for any, Portage Township currently is, but leave those out for now? To me, I think there should be more discussion about how can we have that parity, and, and what makes sense for the township versus the county, in terms of what those pay, what those pay levels should be. And, you know, my, my thought is, or my initial thought would be, you know, it should be parity, And, you know, my, my thought is, or my initial thought would be, you know, it should be parity, the same, without taking into consideration all the different nuances between the two, the two different entities. So, maybe take those special raises out of Portage Township and have the county assessor and township assessor get together and talk about those differences. And if there's a need for some sort of special raise at that point, for your office, their office, whatever, then we can address it at that time.
Could we also enter into the level two and level three discussion with the caveat that if it does affect the budget three years from the road, they, we have to talk about giving them back, or, you know, I mean.
It's hard to get.
You want to talk about a morale.
Well, if we know it now, then.
Yeah, because we're going to pay with it in three years. Now, when you get a raise.
You get a reversal.
Thank you, Mr. Jessen, though.
But, John, rather than, and I understand what you're trying to do, reward the various levels, getting a four percent across the board raise, that's healthy.
With those alone.
Good raise.
I'm not saying that, when we, when we came in with the level two and level three request, we had no idea at that time that there would be a four percent increase.
So, is that an idea? Leave those the way they are, any of the four percent raise?
That's fair, but I would still like to keep the two and three in place for the reasons I've already stated. But, and, you know, it's ultimately the board's decision, not mine, so just requesting it. And I've tried to make a case, I've sent you guys a separate email to explain it further. And it is what it is, you guys, it's your, it's your call, and, you know, appreciate what you guys do.
I make a motion for four percent raises, not the special raises with the.
Portage Township assessor.
Portage Township assessor, the four percent raises, and leave the reassessment fund alone with the various levels.
So, leave them as they currently are, or what we approved the other day?
Leave them as they currently are.
Second motion.
Yes, currently, as you tentatively approved two weeks ago, or two thousand eighteen.
We got to clarify that.
Two thousand eighteen because of your recommendation that we're concerned about the fund, and both departments are pulling in.
So, all he's really getting is a four percent raise, then.
And so is the other department. And he was not anticipating the employees would be getting a four percent raise when he put in for the increase in the.
And the level two and the level three remain at, yeah, they're at a thousand currently?
I think so, yes.
Okay, is that right?
Each one, yes.
So, if I could be, if I could be clear on this, Karen, you're suggesting, or you're thinking maybe four percent, no special raises for Portage Township assessor, take those out. Am I right so far? And with respect to level two, level three, just keep them at current years' level.
Because the fund needs to be sustainable, just like our insurance fund does.
Yeah, I disagree, Tom, I'm just trying to clarify. Okay, we've got a motion, we have a second. Any more questions or comments?
The only caveat, and I'll just restate, to have, to have you work with the Portage Township assessor and further review this whole topic of level two, level three distinctions, and also talk about parity, whatever that might look like between the two offices.
I mean, if I could, Mr. Jessen, just throwing that in there, the data that Ms. Neary has uncovered puts the Porter County assessor's employees at a very lower pay scale than other assessing officials right next to, you know, on all, on all sides. And so, to come back to you guys with that type of a plan is going to be kind of groundbreaking because, you know, based on that kind of information. So, I'm not sure if that's what, I mean, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but.
Well, my, my point is, it appears as if something's not quite right with the, the wages. And one, one department's asking for significant raises to try to bring parity, and your request is more, more reasonable.
Yes.
But somewhere in there, I would like to think that the two can agree with some sort of proposal they bring to us, and then we can talk about it, and depending on how groundbreaking it is, or how, how we feel about it, then we can make the determination at that time.
Well, I think your thought is, John, that our county in particular is underpaid versus the other counties in the state.
Just throw it out there, probably so.
Well, we probably say that for most departments, that would be.
Can we, I think we got to move forward.
Call them, call them.
Call the question. Okay, we've got a first, we've got a second, all those are, let's do roll call first.
Um, Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
No.
No.
Wait, what's that?
Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Um, Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
And Councilmember Witten.
No.
No, okay, so, we have five to two.
Supposedly, in my conversation, wasn't leading down that path, so, but.
All right. So, is there anything else you guys wanted to cover with regards to the salary and everything else?
Do we have all of our numbers for filed now?
No, we don't have to rework the assessments here.
Do you need a few minutes behind the break? Yeah, let's take a five minutes break, we'll reconvene in five minutes.
Are we done?
No, they.
Already over.
Turn off the light.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I'm going to go.
I know, that's not where I was headed.
I think we did, I don't think we did.
If we don't know what we know, then let's surprise, and talk about it later.
I was trying to. Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yep.
You can't see that, that's why we jumped out here, we were too suspicious. There's, there's.
Carol's asking in the movie.
Right.
Especially, you know, why do they always take rates? I'm an old grandma, and I.
Yeah, that's what I called in on. Next time, make some side work.
Oh, yeah, we do, we do the salary. Or is that affecting?
You want to go home?
Because this is, this.
Well, I'm afraid we've had enough time.
I'm not going to, let's not worry about that because if we have a.
We could always, it's not like we haven't addressed raises in the middle of the year, you know, I, I don't want to.
Do a little house thing.
For the most part, yeah.
But anyway, these are the, we're coming to the end, so we'll have a session. Now, go out, you have to go progress to level. And this is out of this, lovely.
Hi, Joe. Pleasure. Good meeting you. Um, is that a problem? Hi.
Yeah.
I'll be done.
Hey, how are you? Good to see you.
Okay, okay.
Don't be, don't be, don't be late. You don't brag. I need to do real quick. I'm sorry, I think you'll.
You are?
On? I am, so, this is good. I got one more to do.
There you go, I got some Medicare.
She's really.
Well, no, I have to stay up there till I get my Medicare.
Oh, my God. Poor folks, these are people. You know, I have to go to the airport. People, we went to the airport. All day.
We were parked.
To make it better, that's more, yeah. Now, I'm playing right here. I, I'm trying to, I'm just making it right.
I know, the county's fine, right? Yes, we're out.
We can add to that.
As a matter of fact, I'm, I'm, we're talking about four hours. Do you have to do?
We know much easier. Yeah. My time is good, so we're cool.
Yeah. He did, this is part of the. Good, good.
Oh, we're back.
It becomes a very difficult policy here in Florida. It is, I would kind of harvest that. If I was to start now, maybe that's, I'm serious. Four years ago, it was a different story. If I start back again, just ask the guys over early.
Are we ready?
I think so.
Oh, my goodness, and I think you beat it.
Oh, whatever. I don't either.
That's fine, I'm just, I've got so many different copies of all this stuff.
Trying to sort it out.
Oh, I know.
Trying to stick to one copy.
Actually, I don't think you'll see it, yeah. All the pieces, I hate to go, I'll just take them back to y'all.
I don't care, you're going to look. Cleaning those out, putting the paperclip in the little thingy.
Right, yeah, I've been taking all these, I said, what am I doing this for? Well, I see, what is in the hell is camp?
Oh, I think it's, I think it's done.
Well, what can we do?
I don't think it's. I'm assuming that, I think, there's probably, I could say, what did they tell? Fifty to seventy left right now, um, the, the.
The Morley Addicks peak was a hundred?
Oh, it was, actually, it was three hundred, I think at some point. What had happened was, school in the last five or six years, just started, like, maybe ten years, letting too many people. Maybe, you didn't say too many, they were letting in people.
Special raises, how, how did those special raises, um?
And, and the, when, when.
That only affected the Portage. Oh, I didn't.
They, the, the, just got a little too lax with admission standards in the last, we, ten to five to ten years, and so, it just.
The passing of the bar was kind of an issue.
Going down, and, and, and the ABA, which credits the law school, said, guys, this is unsustainable. So, then they got censured, and then their, their, their enrollment went way down, and then the undergrad kind of, I think undergrad was, because it's no longer, because Howard. So.
So, that's why in nursing, it's, it's, you don't have time to speak up.
Oh, I, I, and they made, they were just.
You do not get in.
It was, it, if they had done that, it would have been, I mean, it would have been an issue. I mean, they might not have been profitable for, you know, a certain number of years, but I think it would have, the, the law school would have been unsustainable, it just wasn't. And those bar fights have been going down.
These people.
It was a problem, and the ABA, when they, when the ABA censured, that was just like the, 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 the. And then what they're struggling on in Tennessee, they, they wanted, school was all in favor of fighting, I understand. I only know this because I've got a buddy who at the church who works at the law school, they talk, right? But, um, the, it was, it was, David said, the Tennessee Higher Education Commission, I think that ultimately, what the law fires.
But it's not going to be mine, ma'am.
Purchase, you know, wanted to, and so, and then after, I think this probably happened with the undergrad, and they just said, the, the school general said, all right, wash your eyes, you know, wash your hands. Too bad, it's sad, actually.
Well, what's going to happen with the, um, professors?
I think a lot of professors have already, not a lot, but it's, it's, it's already, well, different. Otherwise, there's a disagreement that they put into a lot of them. So some of, most of this staff is going to be paid. Yeah. And, you know, there's, there's, there's probably going to be a certain percentage of professors that aren't going to be able to find it. But there were a certain percentage of professors in this school. That's one of the other schools.
Is that not, you know, what you're saying?
Do you have any, you know, exactly, so?
I do. And what is so? Did it put the kids, people, Cam go through the phone?
Yep.
Did you see any articles in the newspaper?
How about that?
Amy Lavalle's article, or did they take it?
All about it. They don't have a degree?
I, when I was a unit manager.
Does anybody have?
No, no one was.
Yep.
They had three, I got three new brands. They were, they weren't.
Yep, I, yep.
They plunked. Take them all. When you make plunk at the first time, you're out.
Yes, sir. No, well, I don't know, no, they're sitting on a day.
Really?
Yeah.
And they don't require him?
They, they, they're, they're, it's, it's, they might take another bar worse or something, but it's, and there's, I don't know, I don't know what the exact number is. I know it's.
Well, I'm going to tell you, you gotta have two.
Yeah, yeah.
You're next.
Oh, I know, I know, I know. Well, and they're also, you're going to have to use.
You're being the end of the piece and ask her.
Yeah, yeah. What is this thing? Something that was just voted for. So. I didn't know whether that'd be good.
But now it is. If we went backwards as a school, the Portage Township, uh, was then making more than so.
Yep. Yeah.
It's just stuff.
Right, right.
Those are actual ones?
Yep.
And I have, no. I don't care either. I mean, I don't even look at them.
I love looking at them.
Avoid it.
It's literally, it's one.
Andy.
Yes.
For our final reading, you want me to read all the funds? Or just the, the motion will have to be that you're adopting the budget.
Do you want me to listen? Because I need someone to make this motion.
Okay. Yeah, let's defer to Harold.
Harold, no, I, I was, I was just, I'm.
In some past final adoption, we've read the entire list of all funds. But I remember that last year, it just lets you prove it based on the decisions that we made. I would feel comfortable getting it in the record that these funds that we know have changed dramatically in the last, you know, month or two.
Do you want to read?
Yes, we would.
Okay, okay, okay.
Because what we have to do now is we have to put all this on the schedule.
Are we going to do final adoption of salary today? We still have to.
Well, the document is not ready.
That's what you're saying?
It's real stuff. You didn't know that, because you were going to say.
And they definitely do the, 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 the work.
December thirty.
Yeah, so we're okay. But what, what, definitely we need to do a couple of things, just the actions. The budgets, what you're saying is just that we, you know, we don't want to leave the, the area. Do you want to be able to read the significant changes?
The significant changes.
That's, we're good.
Because by getting rid of some of these special raises, it affected the general fund. By adding, and adding the course of size, it affected the general fund.
But we're still within, we're still a hundred of the, the number now.
We said we're only thirty-five hundred.
Okay, it's time to get started, what do you think? You ready? You don't have to put that back. You get down here and then you can do it.
Are the, we're right there, we're right there.
This is like a good school project. It's like your, like a field trip, kind of.
Shoot me.
All right, let's reopen the meeting.
Where'd you go? Oh, we're doing, uh, Challenger Hammond. You see the space and stars and all that good stuff, and the astronaut stuff? Yeah, have you ever been there?
Now, this call is meeting that's.
That's a fun.
You'll like that. Sorry. Can we wait a minute? We'll wait one more minute for Mr. Witten to return.
Mr. Witten.
Councilman Witten.
Somebody fall down if we're not good.
I, I was asked, by the way, if there'd be an opportunity for the public to speak. We'll have that at the end of the meeting. We'll allow Vicky to go over the final reading here, and then we'll, we'll chat.
I'd like to really screw Vicky up here for a second.
Okay, very good.
Uh, my, my, that wasn't the direction I was really headed for. You know, it, with the county assessor and the county assessor.
Right.
I, I really, I looked at. I don't know, they do similar things. I mean, he's saying that they have a few more responsibilities at the county, but to me, I, I don't know how much more. They do the same thing.
You ready?
Yeah.
We started.
So.
Jeff, you're talking about the assessor now.
And, and right now, there's a six thousand dollar difference in the county assessor to the township assessor.
It actually grows with the four percent increase.
Yes, and it will grow with the four percent increase, that difference. So, and the chief deputy, the difference is six thousand. So basically, right now, there's a six thousand dollar difference between the township assessor, the county assessor, and their chief deputies, which four percent will make that grow. And I see where she was trying to go, to try to get that more in line. I guess I was looking at it more in line with what the township assessor makes, what the county assessor makes, versus the auditor, versus recorder, versus treasurer, trying to.
Question.
Trying to, in my mind, keep those more in line, too, of what I feel anyways, the responsibilities are. So when we cut out the, the, you know, the raises, the thirty-four hundred dollar raise for the township assessor and the twenty-one hundred dollar raise for the chief deputy, we've kind of, like Jeff said, we're, we're, we're going to grow that.
The gap?
Yeah, the gap, yeah.
Could we, could we maybe reduce those amounts by, I don't know, four or five hundred dollars each in the raise and just still continue on with the process?
I might do something like that, but I wouldn't, I don't want to take away from what Mike said. I do think the two have to get in a room together, because I think they do a lot of the same thing.
And I, I, I think, I mean, at a, at a minimum, what we're doing is we're saying that both departments are getting a four percent raise. At a minimum, that's what they're getting, right? And we're also saying that, or at least I would be open to, them getting together, presenting, presenting the package to us, the information to us, so that we better, and we're not prepared tonight to make any sort of determination on that, from my estimation, because we don't know enough about it. And I think we should hear from both of them and, and, and talk about it at that time. And so I'm not suggesting we go through this year and then wait till the end of the year when we always talk about these special raises. If there's a reason, a specific reason for a special raise, then we should talk about a special raise.
And is, are you guys wanting to ask them to get together and meet before the next meeting, before the final adoption of?
Well, that's their choice. They certainly haven't the incentive to do it, right?
Yeah, but we need to know, if we're going to make adjustments that are going to hit the general fund, I want to know tonight.
Yeah, we should know.
Vicky has to know tonight.
I think we.
Jeremy, would you be happy if we just reduced those special raise amounts by five hundred dollars individually? I mean, at least it gets them closer to parity.
Yeah, I, I hate to just take away the, you know, thirty-four hundred dollars for somebody twenty-eight. We're, we're increasing that. So, um, yeah, I don't. What do you suggest, five hundred dollars off the thirty-four and the twenty-one hundred?
Or make them easy for you, whatever makes it easy.
Just an arbitrary, arbitrary number.
I was thinking that the whole.
Yeah, it just roll off the tongue, felt good, in a sense, for the moment.
The thought of that, Mike, is, is that if we pull it away, it looks like we haven't done anything to appreciate the fact that they are doing basically the same job. If we give them something as a general.
Should we ask?
And I'm just saying, I, I don't know it well enough to say whether they are or they aren't, or what they should or shouldn't get.
Find out what they make.
Um, she cut, halts a Portage Township, cut eleven thousand dollars out of other items in her budget to be able to do this.
To do those increases. Yes, she did, yeah.
I assume your, your numbers for us, Vicky, show that cut?
That was the budget she turned in.
That's what we, that's what we did on second read.
Right.
Yeah.
Is there a motion on the table?
Well, I just don't like the sounds of it at all. It just seems like a real.
We did not.
That's, that's fast money, isn't it, man?
I, I make a motion, and do what you guys want with it, that we cut the five hundred, we, we, the Portage Township assessor, five hundred dollars off the thirty-four oh nine, so whatever that math is real fast, and five hundred dollars off the twenty-one eighty-four.
So twenty-nine oh nine and seventeen eighty-four.
Sure, yeah, that's minus five and five. That, we were not, we're not increasing the difference in people who are doing the same thing.
Sixteen eighty-four, sixteen eighty-four.
It, you know, assessor versus assessor, if we don't, if we deny these special raises, but.
And we already denied the increase to the levels, right?
Right, right.
So that's.
Twenty-nine oh nine and sixteen eighty-four.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
There's other, there's other special raises that she was asking. In my memo, I only included the two top ones, just because, you know.
Because, you know.
Jeremy made a motion to cut two five hundred dollars less on each of their. I'll second Jeremy's motion. So we've got a first, we've got a second, and that would take the Portage Township's assessor's special raise to twenty-nine oh nine, the chief deputy's special raise to seventeen eighty-four.
Sixteen eighty-four.
Sixteen eighty-four, thank you. So that's the motion on the table. Is there any questions or comments? Okay, hearing. I'm sorry, Jeremy, did you have something? I may cut you off.
No, I just, and we, you did take down the.
Right. The levels remain the same from the prior.
I got it.
Two minutes.
And they still get the four percent increase.
Yes, all right.
And they would get the four percent increase first, and then the special raises. Uh, Ms. Vicky, or was there anything else, guys? I'm sorry. Ms. Vicky, roll call please. That's just our names, Vicky. Are that off? You don't have to do any numbers on that.
Councilmember Reva.
Yes.
Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen.
No.
No.
Thanks.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Witten.
Um, I'm just curious, what was, do you see something in there I don't, what was the no? Do you?
Uh, more explanation, justification for the raise and as it relates or compares to the county assessor.
Um, yes.
Okay, and Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
So we're six to one that that.
Nothing, I don't disagree with you, I just.
No.
Better just shoot from the hip, man, I hope it works out. All right, switch this thing off.
So by the other special raise. There, there are other steps getting special.
Right.
You just cut the special rate down by five hundred.
All right, so we have completed the salary ordinance. We have the final adoption for the salary ordinance in our November meeting. Um, next step, we have final reading, Ms. Vicky.
We have to, give us a second, we're adding the amount for the, what you just said, to the total.
Now, is there anybody else?
We already approved it.
Thank you.
I think that, I've, I've got all my ideas out there, but Daniel, unless you have something to show.
Just when I think.
Where? As soon as Vicky starts reading.
Didn't you want to take that percentage, tell me three and a half percentage?
Yes.
Is that a month?
I do not.
Can I gavel that?
I do not, we don't take away.
So did she calculate, what are we doing here?
I don't.
Did somebody want to talk? She, is it?
Vicky's about to do final reading.
I would like to talk.
Dan, it's practice.
We, we have been struggling and struggling with this as the county council. And if somewhere down the road, next year and into the following year, it's not an inexpensive proposition to have a professional company come in here. Oh, no. Salaries across the state, across the county, and do some sincere evaluations. You're going to find some of your employees are overpaid, you're going to find some of them are underpaid, and that might be something to think about going forward.
What if they come and say Scott's overpaid?
They usually don't touch.
Everybody's underpaid.
But what do you do, like, as soon as there'll be some overpaid, there'll be a lot underpaid.
Everybody's got to be underpaid.
Well, you might have to do that.
You don't owe someone's pay, do you?
No.
So will you be coming back to help with that?
I'm not even judging.
That's why she's throwing it out there.
I'm just kidding, Scott.
This sucks your right back in, Karen, that's what government does.
You're going to get Dan kicked out of the plane, I'll never get in your.
That's what I'm hoping for.
Now, you will find some that are overpaid by the schedule, but they know what everybody's salary is through the county, through the state, in comparable positions. And some might be a little overpaid, some might be underpaid. And then you have to look at that, and maybe over the course of two years, you can have some parity, some true parity when we stumble through this. And we do go by what a department had to say. But then you talk to another department, hey, well, they don't do what these people in my office do. All that is gone, it's gone, and it's fair, and it's suggestive.
That impersonation seemed a little acrimonious to me, Karen. We like to get along here in government. So we're going to miss you dearly, Karen, and I, you really need to consider coming back and, just for nothing else.
We got an open appointment.
She'll be running, she'll be running for council at large, don't you let her kid you. Vicky, are you guys ready?
You're going to miss Karen.
Go ahead and get started.
I'm going to miss you, and you're going to miss me.
Oh, I missed you, I missed.
You got the whole list, right?
Yep.
General fund, forty million dollars, six fifty-six, six ninety.
Say that again, please.
Forty million, six fifty-six, six ninety.
I was on what we were trying to do. Nice.
We're under three hundred eighty-five dollars?
Yes, yes, but, yes.
Wow.
We're not moving anything around.
Thanks for cutting that five hundred.
Yeah, see, I knew. No, I was doing, Mike.
All right, well, let's get to this final reading. Let the public speak and get home.
You want, um, to read the other ones?
Whatever, yes.
Okay, non-reverting, one eighty-nine, one eighty-seven, reassessment, five hundred and thirty-seven.
Down to one that's three eighty-five?
Okay. Lit, five million, seven hundred thirty-nine.
All right, Vicky.
Ninety-five cents.
You have to approve this, this is final reading, listen.
About no.
I've already got the numbers in my head.
Police pension, two hundred and twenty thousand, animal shelter, ninety thousand, convention and visitors bureau, one million, nine hundred sixty-five, eight seventy-six. Highway, six million, five thirty-three, three twenty-seven, local roads and streets, one million, eight hundred sixty thousand dollars. Cumulative bridge, three million, six hundred ninety-six thousand, three hundred nineteen. Health, two million, twenty-one thousand, eight thirty-one. Civic center, five hundred and seventeen thousand, five eleven. Continuing education, twenty-one thousand, emergency telephone system, two million, five oh eight, three oh six. Jail lease rental, two million, nine hundred forty-eight thousand. Park operation, two hundred and twenty-six, five eighty-four, parking garage, fourteen thousand, five hundred, bank commission. Seven seven four, four thirteen. Uh, CCC, two million, two hundred and forty thousand, eight oh nine, special airport general, one million, three seventy-eight, two eighty-two. Special airport cumulative building, two thirty-eight, five five five, special solid waste management, one point, uh, I'm sorry, one million, four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight. Special fire service general, one hundred and twenty-six thousand, ninety-six. Special cumulative fire, seventy-three thousand, six hundred and fifty. County corrections, a hundred and twenty-four thousand, non-reverting capital fund, forty-six thousand. County user fees prosecutor, five hundred and thirteen thousand, one fifty-five. Health maintenance, ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and ten. Foundation budget fund, four million, six hundred and thirty-four, two sixty-three. LAPC, eighteen thousand, recorder perpetuation, two hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and eleven. Adult probation supplemental and abuse, a hundred and thirty-six thousand, two fifty, GIS, thirty-two thousand. Prosecutor pre-trial diversion of one hundred thousand, one thousand, nine fifty-six. Juvenile probation user fees, a hundred and two thousand, three seventy-nine, adult probation user fees, three hundred and ninety thousand, five thirty. Surveyor perpetuation, one forty-six, nine seventy-six. Firearms, eighty-five thousand. Extradiction, uh, five thousand, hazardous substance, forty thousand. Vehicle inspection, five thousand, accidents, five thousand, domestic violence grant, one hundred and forty-eight thousand. Cable TV franchise, one million, one hundred thousand. County 4D incentive, fourteen thousand, one twenty-six, stop grant, thirty-one thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. Memorial Opera House, four hundred and sixty-one thousand, five sixty-three. Public safety data tech, two hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred, jury fee, seventy thousand. Adult probation pre-trial services, fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven. Clerk 4D, eighty-one thousand, four eighty-eight, prosecutor 4D incentive, one eighty-six, one twenty-five, photo duplicates, eleven thousand. Uh, emergency medical, two hundred and fifty-six thousand. Clerk perpetuation, seven thousand, state criminal, alien assist, eight thousand. Health trust, tobacco comp, sixty-nine thousand, four ten. Circuit court, family court, ten thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five. Stormwater, three, three million, six hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six fifteen, okay. Inmate processing, a hundred and thirteen thousand, adult probation admin fee, one hundred and fifty thousand, nine nine five. Juvenile probation, admin fee, administrative fee, twenty thousand, five hundred and fifty-four. Circuit court, D, sixteen thousand, one forty-eight. Hospital trailer liability, fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand, yes. Circuit court, ADR, seven thousand, seven twenty-six, hospital interest, five hundred and fifty thousand. Juvenile detention codes, fifty-two thousand, eighty-three. Prosecutor check deferral, five thousand, sheriff county user fees, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight, six eighty-nine. Sex and violent offender, twenty-three thousand, one sixty-five, hospital sale proceeds, six sixty-five thousand. Drug test, forty-one thousand, twenty-nine thousand, three eighty-four. Public offenders supplemental, a hundred and four thousand. Prosecutor 4D PCA, seven thousand, three hundred, medical care inmates, twenty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty. Prosecutor state and local grant, six thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars. Edward Byrne Memorial, a hundred and eighty-five thousand, sheriff overweight vehicles, twenty-seven thousand, six seventy. Highway overweight vehicles, fifty thousand, sheriff donations, forty-six thousand. Sheriff adult community correction, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred. Court community corrections, fifty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-two, adult probation community corrections, a hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred. A Zona donation, fifty thousand. Videotape fees, ten thousand, unsafe building fund, a hundred and thirty thousand. Ditch fund, one point four million dollars, animal control fee control, sixty-three thousand, seven hundred, animal shelter fee shelter, ninety-three thousand, six hundred. Highway community crossings, one million, court interpreter grant, two thousand, five hundred. District one tax courts fund, thirty thousand, county revenue bond project fund, twenty-four million, and stormwater bond construction fund, forty million, one hundred and fifty thousand. That concludes third and final reading.
All right, thank you, Vicky. And you, there was, I didn't, could you run through those again real quick, Vicky? Okay, so we need a motion, am I correct? Yeah, I'm going to make a motion to approve, uh, third and final reading. Okay, we've got a first, we've got a second. Any discussion or comments?
Yeah, Karen and I were just talking about.
That's why I was distracted. Okay, so hearing no questions or comments, uh, roll call please, Ms. Vicky. And just so everyone's aware, you've got some forms to sign from Vicky, so please don't leave.
I'll, you have someone writing the form.
We will, yeah, we want to get the final reading out of, out of the way, yes.
Should I make you sign them before I do the roll call?
No.
Just to make sure.
Just bring it on.
I don't know how I'm.
Did you find that last?
Roll call, Vicky.
I'm trying to see who we were. Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Witten.
Um. I'm going to vote yes.
Councilmember Bozick.
Yes.
And Councilmember Reva.
Yes.
Seventy-two zero.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Now, I'd like to take a moment and open it up to public comment. Um, if you wanted to speak, please come up front, identify yourself and speak into the microphone.
Is the whole cast waiting for you guys?
It's Laurie, too. Yeah, it's not a big role, really, they can do, they can do it, yeah. Hi there, good evening.
Thanks for giving me an opportunity to speak.
I'm going to say your name and.
Kevin Quinant, four fifty-two North East Drive, right here in Valparaiso. Uh, I have to tell you, I sat back there and wondered about these raises you guys are talking about. Last year, you gave a three percent raise. This year, you gave a four percent raise. I've been in the construction industry my entire life, we never got a raise like that. It's usually two percent or something like that, so when you talk about giving somebody a four percent raise plus an increase in their pay, that just doesn't sound responsible to me. That's a tremendous amount of money. I don't think you're getting four percent on that money that you have invested, are you?
Yes.
Are you? Well, thank God, because you guys are spending it like water.
And some of them, we had to bring in a parity. Some of them were just underpaid positions, and some of them took on new job duties, for example, IT director.
Sure.
I mean, we did discuss a lot of those during the meeting, just so you know, that we didn't just make them willy-nilly. We actually had a lot of thought.
Well, I understand parity and for training and everything like that, as people improve their situation, I understand that. But, I mean, just an across-the-board four percent raise, now what's going to happen next year? Another raise? Are we doing four percent, five percent next year, too? I mean, somewhere along the line, this is, isn't going to add up, you know.
So I, Kevin, I, I appreciate your comments, I truly do. And I, and I think that from my perspective. You know, we got behind a little bit, we, we came through some rough patches, and yeah, we're getting some money out of our investments, albeit, you have to understand that a lot of that money is going back into our rainy day or holding funds. We're trying to build up a little bit. I don't anticipate big raises every year, no, I don't. But when I saw that, for example, the sheriff's department had fallen to one of the lower paying in the county, I thought we ought to do a couple of things a few years in a row. But your points are well taken, they are generous raises.
They are, they're very generous.
Um, I hope this year got us to where we need to be, and we can.
Well, it's just something that kind of sticks out.
I understand, I appreciate the.
Another thing is about this lease of this building. You know, the taxes, the taxes on the lease.
Forty.
Yeah, forty.
I'm sorry, I forgot about it already.
Yeah, well, unfortunately, the taxpayers have, were overcharged for decades on this thing. And I understand you're able to take back three years.
With a beat of a bowl up for it. Just so you know, it's, it's the. With a beat of hope for it, just so you know, it's, it's, uh.
Okay, so what I'm concerned about and what I'm not hearing is any prosecution of these people that have, that have actually just stolen from the taxpayers. So.
That's a half, that's, I mean, you could say that, but that's, yeah.
We, first, we'd have to establish that they've overcharged us, which you can maybe say that, but we, we can't say that without an awful lot of investigative work.
Well, and. And unfortunately, the guy that would be the one to determine that signed the lease.
Well, I understand that, too, but also the federal government paid two-thirds of that, so, and I know nobody wants to say we need to contact the federal government and take a look at this, but somewhere along the line, somebody has to be held accountable for basically stealing from the taxpayers. And I'd like to see something along those lines happen, at least, something has to happen. You just can't throw your hands up and say, you know, that's okay, you know, we just said, you know, that's fine, you've stolen from us, but.
We need not say that on this board, I'll tell ya.
Oh, I, I know, but I mean, just in general, just in general, we're not seeing anything about that.
And we, we've all talked about those ideas and we've all discussed where that was going. And, and the real issue is, is if you wanna involve the federal government, do we, do we owe them money? Because they paid two-thirds of the lease, but do we, do we as a county have to then reimburse them? Um, so there's a lot of aspects that, when you look at this whole thing, and trying to find a like and kind building, that's the amount of money that we are looking for. And, and, and so there's lots of factors, and I know you're familiar with that, that go into, that go into that structure and that lease. We definitely don't, we're not protecting anybody in that lease because we obviously defunded a, a, a non-viable contract.
Right.
And thanks to this board and to some investigative work, that we found out that that lease was in fact not valid. But the, the real issue is, is being responsible to our taxpayers moving forward is our initial process, and that's where we're focusing. And going into litigation to try and retrieve money, you, you know as well as all of us know, that the, the cost of getting that money back would probably outweigh what we would eventually receive.
And I'm not even really that interested in the money, like you said, it'd take a lot to get it. I'm looking more about prosecution from the people, or the people that actually stole from us. You know, that's what I'm after. I wanna see somebody held responsible for overcharging us for decades.
Now, we are the fiscal body of, of the county government, so that would not be something that we would handle, just so you, I assume you knew that, I just wanted to.
Yeah, but I mean, you could probably get the ball rolling, I would think, somehow, I don't.
Mr. Cornet, we haven't had, the commissioners haven't, when they renewed this lease, done a, I guess, a market analysis over existing business leases.
Mm-hmm.
About Valparaiso. I know there's been some numbers thrown out in forty, when the county had to lease, uh, the health department to be in a separate facility, and, um, it was, uh, Seth Schneider, who said, you know, the high end of a lease out there is twenty-nine dollars a square foot. That was not the case here, this was a gross lease. We don't enter into the leases, but maybe going forward, an important lesson was learned. And we, you know, I think the commissioners might wanna say, well, you know, we wanna market analysis of current lease space, and this was a gross lease.
Right, and it's, but they were purposely misleading the commissioners and this body, saying that they were leasing you this much space when they knew darn well they were not. So that, to me, I'm not a lawyer, but that looks like fraud to me, you're, you're, you know, you're, you basically.
It's a different board, a different animal, that we have no control.
It was a different time, it was a different place. I understand, but, but we're here right now.
I think that, uh, this board, really, we took action and asked and, and we found out, and we've acted on it.
Right, well, you got.
Set the money aside.
Acted on the forefront for the past six, seven, eight months, you know, too.
And I, and I, I feel your pain and understand as a taxpayer, because all of us on this board live in our communities and have had our money.
Unless they illegally sit on this board, need addresses.
No, I'm illegal.
There was a time Jeremy lived in two different districts.
But, but the real issue, the real issue is.
That was the board.
The real issue is, is that it would be remiss of us and probably not responsible of us to try and pursue something like that with our current tax powers. And not only, not, it's not something that privately probably couldn't be investigated, but for us to say that something like that has occurred, we don't have the information, we wouldn't be probably privy to that information unless we requested it.
But we do, but we do have a prosecutor's office.
We do.
But again, he's on that side of me, so maybe you have to get someone above him.
Maybe, maybe so, and I don't know where to go with that, I'm just talking to you folks. The last thing I wanna talk about is our voting situation. I know this isn't the election board, but I don't know if you're all aware of what terrible time people are having with absentee ballots. I had people that have been waiting for weeks, and most of these are elderly people that can't get to the polls.
Do you, do you know about tomorrow's meeting? They're having an open meeting, a public meeting, and this would be a great thing to, I didn't mean to cut you off, please continue, I just wanna make sure you knew about the meeting.
You know, uh, from what I understand, when they receive an absentee ballot, they have to get it out in the mail that day, under, under law. So I don't know what is falling down here, and they also have a, what they call a traveling board, where people will go and, and, you know, vote at, vote at home. However, they can't tell you within a three-day span of when they will be there. They'll say, we'll be there either Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday. So people are supposed to just hang there and wait until they can figure out, I mean, are they that understaffed, are they underfunded? What is the deal if they can't even get a ballot out in the mail?
So, so here's the deal, we, what we can speak to is that we all share your frustration. But we can also speak to is that, from our perspective, they're funded, because we have asked numerous times, what do you need? How much you need? Do you have everything you need? And every turn in the road, it's been, we have enough, okay, we're not asking for anything more. So then, from the perspective of the election board, I know that myself, and I know that Jeremy have, has reached out to various members of the election board from both parties, and said, would, do we have this thing under control? Do we have a handle on it? What has happened? Again, if you need something, we will fund it. We will fund it, and that's all we can do. And they told us they were, they were good.
Well, it's, it's not.
So, please bring that to them tomorrow.
Yeah, it's not good, I just, I didn't know if everybody was aware of the wait time for these absentee ballots.
Some of that might be mail-related, I don't know, but it's not my job.
What, what time is the meeting tomorrow?
Three o'clock.
Dude, that's Halloween, man, that's the one night I get to visit with my great-great-grandfather. I think it's.
Three o'clock.
Three o'clock here in this, in this room? That'd be good for anybody that's interested.
I think that's, that's the venue we have, Dan is correct, I, I think Andy, I've talked to, we reached out to Dave Bangs, we've reached out to JJ. We're, we're communicating, they're saying they're, they're aware of some of the issues, I, the issues. So they're, they're trying to work through them right now, but that would be the place, definitely, they are charged with elections, that would be the place to make certain that they are aware of everything that you're, you're hearing.
Right.
What are the issues?
What we're hearing, we'll bring to them.
Okay, well, I just wanna make you all aware that that's, that's reality, you know? I have neighbors in my, in my district that haven't gotten their ballots, yeah, and that's a problem. So now, we're gonna have to get them to the polls somehow, 'cause I think right now, if they did get a ballot within the next day or so, they have to be there by Tuesday at noon, something like that. There's a good chance their ballot won't, won't count anyway. So we're out of time, and.
You know, that's a good point, maybe you, at that meeting tomorrow, you need to ask, uh, they may, maybe need to make a special exception for, um, make, maybe a three-day wait on the mail, or.
I think there's some discussion about getting some balances provisional, but let, let's see what they, let's see what they, hey, as, as people have so eloquently said, one vote, one voter losing their vote is one too many.
Sure, absolutely, but I'm, that's where we're at, that's where we're at. All right.
And Mr. Cornet, just one more thing, if you can come back on the twenty-seventh, when we'll be approving the salary ordinance, you know, a public document, you'll see how grossly underpaid some of our people are, and you might better understand why we are trying.
Okay, and just, just from an optics, just looking at it, like I said, I've never, never seen one, let alone it's like a twenty-two percent raise? I mean, that, if the optics of it.
Well, again, that person was taking on a lot more.
And I, and I've been in, I've been in your background, I mean, I've worked construction my whole life, and we pay our plow truck drivers and our service guys twenty-one dollars an hour. I mean.
Honestly, my profession, I mean, we're living hand and mouth.
Yeah.
Well, you're a lawyer, I get it, you're making it, I know. Did anyone else have anything for us? Thanks, sir, please.
No, I, I think, my understanding, the average salary in the county's like thirty-eight thousand dollars, I think that's the average. And you talk about people who are plowing our streets, paving our roads, are making twenty, twenty-two dollars an hour. I'm, I cannot sit here and say that county employees are overpaid whatsoever, not, yeah.
It's a good one, it's a good.
Yes, it's a good one.
We're a good employer. This has been all right, oh, we have one, yes.
Yeah.
I can't believe it. Can you please identify yourself, your address, please?
Uh, Dwayne Davison, seven zero one Elmhurst Avenue, Valparaiso. Um, I really appreciate, uh, the, the ability to speak to you, and more importantly, I go to a lot of government meetings, and, uh, there rarely are there such pointed questions, split votes, all of that. I, I see that as a good thing, so I appreciate you guys hashing things out, I'm assuming you'll all go out for a beer afterwards?
We used to until some of those split votes.
Okay. Gotcha, so.
We, we actually never hang around together at all.
Never, okay.
No, he's here and then that's it. I apologize.
And, and speaking of, this young man, I'm impressed, I don't know if he's punished in this.
He's retaliated on his cases now.
Amazing, actually, so, um, yeah, um, I, I wanted to just very briefly recount, um, what, what I mentioned this morning at the county commissioners' meeting. Um, that's with regards to fifteen North Franklin Street lease. Um, I realize, uh, that body, you guys, no, no one in particular here operating today, uh, was intimately part of that. You inherited, uh, something. Uh, my main concern was, how do we react once we get that? So, um, I, I was quite disappointed, I wouldn't be here today, wouldn't be, have gone this morning had the so-called secret meeting uh, between a commissioner and a, an attorney happened. Uh, that's, that, uh, you know, with all due respect, Mr. Larson, this morning you mentioned, well, no laws were broken, but, um, that's not the point, whether a law was broken. Um, the appearance of impropriety is, is what I had a concern with. Um, by all means, if the taxpayers funded a second opinion from an independent counsel, then probably the taxpayers, meaning just a public statement or a public meeting announcing this, was the first step. Um, perhaps you guys paying the bills for all of this ultimately might have been the first step, but I'm not sure, one of the two.
Uh, we agree on that.
Right, so, to, to have had, it happened the way it did, was, it, you know, I lost faith in, in the process that took place, and it was disappointing. So, and, and Ms. Conover, and all due respect as well, you mentioned good faith when referring to it, I, I, I saw no good faith on, on behalf of the taxpayer, you know, with regard to this lease of the year.
Well, there were decisions made at that meeting, Dwayne.
Mm-hmm.
It was a sharing of information, and then it was shared around, and here's one guy out here who had it in the newspaper immediately, the other reporter is not gone. There was no decisions made, it was a sharing of information. Here, heads up, this is going, this is what it is, and it was not a decision-making.
But I will speak to that, because perception is truth, and that's, that, that was my problem with it as well.
They didn't come to the council first, we were the ones that kept it on the forefront for the last eight months. They didn't come to us first, they went to the, so I, I would agree with you.
Well, and I, I see your point, uh, that no decisions were made, and obviously, that's why a second commissioner didn't go, because that would have been a public meeting. So, actually, we're thinking ahead, which is a little bit part of the problem, too, they had, they consciously thought, how can we get the, you're, you're referring to the situation as vendor and all this, so, so let's say, previous owner, present owner, uh, present manager, all, all of those, let's just lump them into one camp, let's say. If, you know, if, if I'm the attorney, I, I would have pleaded with any commissioner saying, you can't do that, can you see how bad that's gonna look? Just from the public perception.
Well, and maybe the attorney was there, and I'm second guessing this, to say, this is the only thing we can discuss with you, if I see you.
Well, I think the other part of that is, we always jump to the dollar amount and misrepresenting the government, but there's always a human quotient in everything we do. And the human quotient is, is that although the lease was determined not valid, they, they really hold us, hold what we have in their hand. We would have been given thirty days, had someone else owned that structure, and probably would have said, you know, well, you found out this wasn't, oh, get your ass out of here, excuse my language, but that would, that would.
Oh, here comes the next press release.
That would have been the way.
I demand apology from you, and I want it for the taxpayers.
I'm gonna show you why. But the reality of that is, is in every decision, and, and we can, we can argue this point till we're blue in the face, that there's gonna be a negative and positive perspective from every decision. And I, and I get, I've been on that side where I'm looking at that going, wow, that brings into a lot of question as to why they did that. But I can assure you that I'm gonna do that same thing every time, based on, I don't want people that I care about in that structure thrown out on the street. And so, my first thought is, is how do I protect the people that are in that position? And then, how do I get to the point I wanna get to? Because remember, you're not talking to people that signed that lease, you're talking to people that got handed that, you know, overinflated football or whatever. They're the ones that are dealing with it. And so, I think, yeah, was that probably the best decision that could have been made? No, and I wasn't agreeing that that was the best decision that could have been made, but I do see that there's always a human quotient in there. And I think, you know, I, I would hate to just throw that out the window and then just go up there and say, well, you know what, you guys got thirty days, get out. So I think we do owe that vendor an obligation to say, you know what, lease came back invalid, I mean, it's not valid.
I, I, here's, I agree with you, Jeff, on almost all of it. I do think that if we're going to take the position that the lease is void, at some point, we do need to let the vendor or the, I hate that word, the, the, the property owner.
Property owner.
Uh, notice of that, I mean, I think we do have to tell them that. But what I'm gonna say is, that I can think of absolutely no valid reason, none, and I am a lawyer, no valid reason, why Commissioner Good, before the opinion was even reduced to writing, took the time to meet with at least a representative, before he even got the opinion, to share that with them, when we had already talked about having an executive to discuss it. I don't, I think it was a colossal misstep, but that's just my opinion. And, and I, but I do agree with you, that we do have some obligation to let the property owner know, this, this lease isn't gonna run to two thousand twenty-four. It is a void lease, and we are moving.
And I think you and I are more familiar with the scenario on what happens in that office and where that information would be shared almost immediately. So I think the presentation was, is, I'm not sticking up for Mr. Good, but I think the presentation was, that information was gonna be leaked to the press before the actual leaseholder, the actual leaseholder knew what was going on. And so, in trying preemptive that, trying to say, look, we're gonna try and fix this, please don't kick it out.
Hold on, Amy, this guy's trying to say people leak stuff to the press, tell me that's not true.
Tell me you didn't have that ready for pitch, tell me you didn't have that ready for pitch before we.
She probably found out. Can't believe this. She did.
These shoot out before we did.
I get it, because they had months to discuss.
I guarantee she did. But a whole other panel won't.
So your point's well made, I agree with your perception.
It's terrible.
Thank you, and, yeah, to, to follow up, Mr. Larson, um, I, I appreciate what you're saying about the hu- human quotient, um, and, and what I'm talking about has nothing to do with what you guys have to wrestle with and the commissioners have to wrestle with, which is, is the debacle, let's face it. You know, where, where's the department gonna go? I mean, you know, nobody's like living there and kicked out on the streets, but it, it's a, it's a problem, I, I agree, and I don't have the solution, uh, on, on that. But let's say that we owe the property owner, um, an explanation on the independent counsel, and perhaps even before the press or the, or the public, then the, the way to do it, when you, you, you've got checks and balances, and you've got, you know, ethics on your side, and, and you're doing the right thing, then the proper thing, in, in my view, would be to, you know, send a certified letter, email, something that's there that says, you know, they get that info to them quickly, um, responsibly, but the way it came off was secret meeting, closed door, what are they talking about? And it, and it kinda even doesn't matter what they talk about, let's just say they only informed them leases no and void. If it's only that, that, that still begs the question of.
And I love the fact that you, and I, and I was in this, I remember Dan said, we were kinda green when you came into this, and I said, I love the fact that you believe that everyone's ethical in positions, because I think in those certain circumstances, I, I believe there. I think in those certain circumstances, I believe there is a thought process that you come into this office and go, "I'm gonna change the way public entities work." And then, there's also a thought process that some things happen as people age into those positions that you don't quite understand. And so, there's an ethics quotient, and I guess my question would be, "Okay, well, then who leaked the information?" Because really, that would be the direction I would wanna know. Why was their information leaked to the press prior to the council knowing? And so, and the whole basis for any of that conversation would be, in a perfect world, we would have had that information, would have been brought to the commissioners, would have been brought to us, we would have been able to release it, we would have been able to send that information forward. But, in this imperfect world that's political...
Sure. And clearly, that should happen, water over the bridge. And then, just the final point would be, I guess my plea to this body is to work with the county commissioners and whomever else to avoid this situation in the future. So, that would be to...
We appreciate it.
...check the leases that are out there, not to say any of them are wrong, but just to, now you've done due diligence, you've looked, you know, no surprises like this one was. So, to work in conjunction, it'll be a good press release.
Have you gotten those, Jeff, Mike, that you requested?
Yes.
Have you gone through them all?
I know, as I understand it, we don't have any long-term leases where we have any outstanding obligations.
That's something that you should know.
We did ask...
Not to... We did make the request.
Just so you know, we are reviewing all those now, every lease, and so...
So, and maybe not just leases, that seems to be where this one led, but if there's another way in which the county council and county commissioners can have, you know, good, solid communication to avoid any improprieties, lease or otherwise, that's what I'm asking for.
I agree totally.
Yeah. Thank you very much, I appreciate it very much.
Here, we're looking for a motion to adjourn. Okay. So, move against that?
I just want to say something real fast. This was the last budget session that I get to spend with Karen Conover, and I... It was, it's been a true blessing, and thank you very much for your leadership. What? Hey, I'm saying something.
I'm sorry, I completely lost interest.
So, when she was making her way up here, I thought I would just think Ms. Conover, Mrs. Conover.
Well, you're coming back, aren't you?
Yeah, but this was the end of the budget session.
Well, I left most before and came back, so...
You did, you did. You said that. That's true.
You're gonna be back next month.
Can you announce yourself, your name and your address?
Yes, Donna Purdue, and I am 802...
Did you gather me?
He did.
Dan told me.
Dan did it, I think. 802 Washington Street, Valparaiso. And just to be straightforward, I am a candidate for county commissioner.